It's 2:00 PM. This is a specially called meeting of the Town Council of the town of Fort Myers Beach. All members are present. The Town Manager, Town Attorney, Town Clerk, of course, several people from the town itself. I want to start by thanking our host today, Gordon Stojkowski, who owns this building. He also owned the Leaky Tiki, the former Leaky Tiki down on the beach, and his lovely daughter Victoria. Thank you so much for providing this venue for us. Before I get on with the agenda, I just want to welcome everybody here today. We've all been through a terrible ordeal. There's no sugarcoating it. Everyone up here at this table has been directly affected, as many of you have. Councilman Allers is homeless. Vice Mayor Hassafros is homeless, although she just obtained a condominium up in Punta Gorda. I am homeless, lost all my possessions and my home. Councilman Aderhalte is fortunate, he was up on the ninth floor. He suffered some damage, but he's going to be okay. And Councilman Beach lost his home on the beach washed away. So, we've all been affected as well. We're going through this with you. I'm not going to equate everyone's experiences to the next one, but I just want to let you know that we are here and we are with you going forward. We're doing our best and we're going to keep moving this restoration project forward. And as I said this morning at the Unified Command Meeting with myself and Chief Martin and the men from Fire Department of New York, who are now our incident commanders down here, I'm already looking forward very much, although we're struggling right now to get through this debris removal and so forth and the initial restoration, I'm already looking forward to the future here on the beach. All this nonsense that we've been hearing about, "Well, we're going to be like Naples and the vultures are coming in here," that's just that. That's nonsense. What we're going to do here going forward is, we're going to elicit complete town buy-in from the people here on Fort Myers Beach, as we always have. What we'll do, and this hasn't been finalized yet or settled yet, but this is as I envisioned it, and as Mayor Saraceno would tell you, how we started off in the beginning, when we brought in the professionals to guide us and facilitate the improvements that we were making on the beach. We had charrettes. We had the people come in. Betty Simpson is here. Betty was very involved in those early charrettes that we had here on the beach. It was a vision. It was a vision of what the beach is going to, how the beach is going to be redeveloped at that time. This is also, this is how I envision what's going to happen here going forward after this disaster. It's going to take buy-in from the town to get this done, but I want to tell you that the resources are there to do it. I've been doing nothing but meeting with people for these past three weeks and been assured that the strength and the financial strength and bearing of the United States of America, the state of Florida, the County of Lee, and the town of Fort Myers Beach are all in this together, and that is what we are relying on. And those assurances have been made to us up and down the chain of command for the past three weeks. And I want to tell you that because I'm at those meetings and I damn well believe it. So, you're going to have, you'll trust me on that because that's the way we're moving forward in this. So, we are with you shoulder to shoulder through this process, shoulder to shoulder. We're not some big deity up in the sky or anything like that. We're your neighbors. We're your neighbors and we're your friends. I'm a 40-year resident of Fort Myers Beach, 40 years. If I wanted to leave, I would have left a long time ago. I have no intention of leaving Fort Myers Beach. Don't carry me out here by my feet when I leave here. So, that's my commitment to you. My commitment is that I'm staying, and regardless of where I am in my political time, I'm going to be here for the redevelopment of Fort Myers Beach. So, thank you for listening to me. We'll move on. The next item is the invocation, which will be given by Councilman Jim Aderhalte, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
Forgive me for sitting, but I want to be able to utilize the microphone. Shall we pray? Dear Heavenly Father, we pray that through all the death and destruction of Hurricane Ian, that you will see us, you will help us to see and be mindful of, and to propagate the countless acts of kindness, grace, generosity, neighbor helping neighbor, friendship, and love that are occurring on our island as a response to this tragedy. Heavenly Father, so many people are hurting as a result of this storm. Please, please help to heal them. Hold them in your loving arms. Please surround them, comfort them, give them a good night's sleep. We especially mourn for those who lost their life. Please lift up their families and friends. We are so thankful for those on our island, right now, this very minute, who are involved in public safety. We are thankful for the utility workers, power, water, and wastewater. We are thankful for those doing the debris removal. We ask that you put a hedge of protection around them all. And Father, if I could add lip for a second, as I came across the South Bridge this morning, I thank you for the workers that made that possible, and I thank you for helping them work that miracle. We're also so very grateful to those who came and continue to come, from the county, the state, and from all around this great nation of ours, to help us in so many different ways. One of those ways has been all the folks who have been praying for us. Help us to not underestimate the power of those prayers. Lastly, Father, I ask that you give everyone a peace, a peace that surpasses all understanding during this difficult time. May you continue to bless and keep the people of Fort Myers Beach. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The next item is the approval of the final agenda. Is there a motion to approve the final agenda?
So moved.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Any objection? The motion carries unanimously. The next item is public comment. Madam Clerk, this meeting will be no different than any other meeting we have. Everyone is entitled and encouraged to speak for three minutes. So, you'll call the names, please.
First up is Tom Torgerson.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Town Manager, and Tom Torgerson, 301 Claremont Circle. Here today on behalf of the KAFB, maybe better known as Margaritaville. Our sincere empathy goes out to everyone in this room.
Mayor.
Testing.
That's it. Just get a little closer, Tom.
My understanding is, hopefully, we can put forth a request for consideration at the next meeting, or perhaps a resolution will be made. The Margaritaville construction did make it through this event with, miraculously actually, a testament to modern engineering. We did not suffer structural damage. You'll see some rubble of blown-out concrete walls. Those are designed, they're called breakaway walls, they're designed to break away and just fall to the ground and not transfer and hurt other people's property. So, we did fare very well. We hope to be a beacon of hope. Getting your disease.
That's all right.
Beacon of hope going forwards, one that portrays confidence in the future and hope. We have a lot to go through. The mayor is right, but we will get there. The specific point of business is, we have the historic Bubble Room, Bubble Building, Cigar Hut, that is the restrooms. It's a pivotal piece to the resort that's in the beach club, and it's red-tagged. There's a lot of people in this rooms are red-tagged. And we basically feel we have two options. We need a resolution from the council for either option. One is a permanent rebuild with a structure kind of like what's been done in Sanibel in several locations at grade level, or a portable trailer approach, and we're amicable to either one. We just ask that a resolution be granted. It takes a variance in either regard by council under these circumstances to allow us to go one direction or another, and we'd like to work very closely with the town with that regard, and we'll go either approach. You could always say permanent would be great. We're under the conditions at hand, not temporary, but portable trailers will work for us as well. And we have a plan figured out under either scenario. And in either case, it would fit within the footprint of what's known as a cigar hut today, so it would not impose on the view corridor any factor with height associated with our ordinance and the passage of our master plan. So, we'd like to be on the future agenda. I've got materials that I know you're going to get overwhelmed here today. I won't leave you with. My time's up, but thank you for everything you're doing, Council.
Thank you, Tom. Madam Clerk, hold off just one second. No, Tom. I forgot to make one announcement at the beginning of this. We're going to meet again on Tuesday, which you all may or may not know. We're going to meet at 2:00 again on Tuesday, same type, format, what have you. Excuse me, 4:00. And anyone, of course, that's Tuesday, so that's one of the tough travel days, right? So, what we're going to do is, we're going to, anybody that comes from off the island to come to the meeting, we're going to issue a pass, a pass to re-enter the island, so there's no hassle at the bridge, okay? So, I forgot to announce that at the beginning. Madam Clerk.
Probably as we all have, I've lost, there's no other way to say it, I've lost on this beach. But when I look around at the island, you've got to be an amazement of what is happening out there today. These trucks, these claws that pick up the garbage, that are moving it, and everything is starting to flow, and all of what's going on out there, you know, is truly, it's amazing. The one thing I need to say is, probably the one group that we owe the most to has to be the Beach Talk radio crowd, because without them, we would have absolutely no Evidently, I'm not the only one. So, if we wanted to know what was going on on Sanibel, we had plenty of access to that. But we've had no access to any kind of information from anybody here. And I know you talk to a lot of people, but you never talked to me. You never talked to this person over here, because you were carrying on with your duties, I guess. But what we want to know is everything that's going on. We want a person that we can walk up to and ask a question to. I spent my entire morning searching for just somebody that could tell me where I can get a permit to put drywall back in my house. Nobody's there to tell me that. We've got a command trailer evidently for the beach that sits way back in the corner, because you guys don't want anybody to approach it. I've got a sticker in my car that I've kept for years and years and years, so I could get back on this island after a storm. Where is that, you know? Have we used those? You're evidently going to pull those out in the future, I guess. I don't know. But anyway, I'll hang on to that, so I can get back on the island. But what I do want to say, above and beyond everything, is if stunning failure of leadership had a face, it would be the clown car that is our council here today. Each and every one of you, each and every one of you are a good individual, but you're way over your head when it comes to disaster response. Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody that this is all being recorded, and if there is a question in your comments, it'll be answered, either on the town website or on the town Facebook page. So, if, go ahead, Karen.
Hi, Karen Woodson. I'm a resident of 823rd Street. I want to thank you all for this meeting today. I think it's really, really important. I'm hoping that we can walk away with some clarification on something that I keep getting tons of questions on, and that is water services. So, on the post that was up, it said water service requests can be submitted along with required structural and electrical inspections reports for the homes. Does that mean that you have to have those two inspections done in order to get your water on? Or are you just saying that it can be submitted at the same time, but you don't need those two to get your water on? Because there's a disconnect between water, electrical, obviously the building, yes, you have to have your building secure, but I'm just hoping to get some clarification on that today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the last time I spoke to you was after your budget meeting, and you voted to raise taxes and fees. I share then how disappointed in you that I was. It didn't seem I could get more disappointed that came Hurricane Ian. I'm sorry for the losses you have all incurred, both personal and your material things. However, it became very apparent there was no plan. Dan, you did more than enough and did your part to fill in the void. I appreciate that. Jim, I think you've done a good job trying to keep people informed as well. But because there was no plan, there was no leadership. Other entities filled that leadership void. Decisions were made about Fort Myers Beach and residents, but not by Fort Myers Beach government. Mayor, you admitted that yourself. That makes this government nothing more than a taxing and spending entity, and we don't need any more of that. In the past, at these meetings, I've heard Sanibel brought up on numerous times and numerous occasions. You should have copied and pasted Sanibel's playbook, held special council meetings. Other council members and citizens could have used information and insight into your decision-making process. That's known as leadership. This acquiescence to other authorities is not acceptable. This is our town, and we should take it back and take a backseat to no one. That's how you be Fort Myers Beach strong.
Cassius Upton, 7950 Astero Boulevard. I was born and raised on Fort Myers Beach and have been here for 36 years. I know these people on Town Council, some of them better than others. My big concern is we have all faced major loss, whether it be our homes, loved ones, pets, all the above. The biggest concern I have is these codes that we have as an island must remain in place. Sanibel has had disasters like this before, and they keep their building codes the same. We do not need, sorry, Tom, but we do not need more Margaritavilles on Fort Myers Beach. The people of Fort Myers Beach do not live there to have it be a Clearwater or a Naples. It is very important that these codes do not change. Yes, building codes have to be, there's going to be some variances on those, but density does not need to change. It is vital for Fort Myers Beach to keep them. Fort Myers Beach is nothing without the community. You can go up and down the state of Florida, and everyone's got a beach with a beautiful sunset. What makes us special is the community and the small people that are part of it. Do not let these big money, big guns from out of this state come and ruin our town.
Thank you, Cassie.
I'm newer to Fort Myers Beach, but I own a house and have been here for seven years. And I feel that I would like to have clarification over this electrical and mold mitigation. Can I get somebody that isn't already got the Fort Myers Beach approval, as opposed to they're licensed in the state? There's a lot of confusion over that, and I already hired somebody and found out that they didn't do a good job, and then I had to fire them and pay them off, and I think I'm not the only one going through this. So, that clarification would be really valuable, because I'm already spending, FEMA won't give me a penny, and I'm understanding nobody else will either. So, in order to rebuild, I don't want to waste more money doing something that you're going to not approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Camden Ashmore.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Camden. I am not a resident of the beach, but I have lived in the community, excuse me, I'm not a resident of the beach, but I've lived in the community surrounding it, Fort Myers and Benita Springs, since 2004. I think something that's very important for residents to have knowledge and information about, regularly updated right now, is requirements regarding permitting, when that process can get started again, what the requirements entail, and more importantly, the restrictions on the FEMA 50% rule. I know it's a very complicated matter, but the public needs clarification on what the city or the town of Fort Myers Beach, how they plan to impose those restrictions, and how that affects what they can do to repair their homes. That's, I know it's a complicated matter, especially with the state's building code. It's like reading a legal textbook, but if there can be some sense of direction for the public to easily understand and know what their restrictions are and how they can rebuild back and get that process rolling, I think it's important to try to reopen the town's permitting office again, maybe hiring outside consultants and whatnot that might need to come in, and I'm sure that you guys are working on that. I don't have the answers, but I know that the public needs that information, at least so they can start their planning process. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Holly Quick. We have a property at 6050 Astero Boulevard. We'd like clarification where we can go to find out. We can't access our property due to the closure of Shelby Lane, and there's another home impeding on our home, and we'd like to know who's responsible for removing that home so we can get to our home to get the removal of that home taken care of. So, if we could find somewhere, somebody can tell us where to go, where that information is available, or who we can speak to, would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good question, and that particular question I just asked of the governor probably about a half an hour ago over at his press conference. That decision is going to be made by the state and the federal government within the next 72 hours. The question is, what do we do if my house blows up on your property and you want to get rid of it? Who pays for it and who gets it out of there? Also, if you want to demolish your house on that property, knock that down, who pays for that and who pays to get it taken away? We're hoping that FEMA is going to cover all of that, and that's the decision that we're waiting on right now. And that is extremely important to all of us here on the beach, and as soon as the feds and the state come to an agreement on that, we are going to get that out immediately, as soon as we know that answer. Next, Madam Clerk.
George Dubrowski and Gisele McKenzie-Lindscott.
Good afternoon. My name is Gisele McKenzie-Lindscott, and my companion and I own 10 Bayview Boulevard. And we would like also clarification on structural validity and the electrical and so on, but we don't want to proceed, because we feel that we're safe and sound. We've gutted everything, whatever, but we still don't have a clear answer as to when or how or who do we contact first, and so on and so forth. So, that's my main reason for being here, so I can kind of start assessing what we need to do next. Obviously, we love this area and we want to rebuild, so that's my bottom line.
Thank you. And your question will be added to the list and answered. Madam Clerk.
Hi, my name is Jason Ingram. I'm a resident of Fort Myers Beach, and I didn't know what I was going to say, but just listening to these folks, it seems like there's no plan for any of these folks to get their information. Zero plan. There's no trailer for them to come to, to answer any of the questions for permitting, what they need to do at all. So, who's got that plan? Evidently, no one's sitting in front of me, and that's a shame, because these people need answers, every one of them. All those people need an answer, and you have no answers for them, none. You want to sit up there and tell people, "Oh, get on our website." No one has internet service. No one. No one has it. So, how are they going to look it up to get your answers? They do not have these things. You've been down there. Do you have internet? No, you don't. And you're telling them to go on the website to look up information they can't even access. You better get a plan, because every other town has come here with ideas to help you all. Panama City Beach was on Beach Talk radio, telling them what they had to go through, how long it took them to clean up. Are you listening to them? Because it doesn't seem so.
Madam Clerk.
I'm going to try not to cry. Jennifer Rusk, resident, 193 Miramar.
Jennifer, pull the mic down, too.
So, long road for everyone, and my heart goes out to everyone that has suffered in our community and our surrounding communities. I have just two questions or concerns. One is the debris removal. My husband and I are not homeless, but we're, you know, living in mud, and the debris on our road is significant, as I'm sure it is all over the island. So, I stayed for the two days, and it seemed like a ghost town for Monday and Tuesday. And we did have a debris truck, and I was jumping up and down, super excited, and they came and did one pickup, filled it up, and left, and never saw them again. I would go out to the edge of the street on Astero Boulevard once an hour to look to see if I could see these debris trucks, and I only saw maybe one or two on Monday and Tuesday. And I only saw maybe one or two on Monday and Tuesday. I'm very concerned. I think we really need, it's getting toxic, it's unhealthy. The second thing is water. Water is our right. It is not something that can be dangled above us to get a permit or to get our structural engineering. Water is our natural right. If I may, on 28th July 2010, the United Nations General Assembly adopted a historical resolution recognizing the right to safe and clean drinking water and sanitation as a human right. That is essential for the full enjoyment of life and our human rights. We need water now. Thank you.
Todd Richardson? Okay. Thank you. Chris Primo? You're gonna pass? Robert and Amy Lazwell, or Lazell, sorry.
Yes, I'm Robert Lazell. You all can hear me from here, right?
No, sir. You have to go to the microphone.
You gotta come through.
All right.
Again, Robert and Amy Lazell, 248 Dundee Road. I'm here with my wife, Amy, and my daughter Emily. Seven questions for you. First of all, I came here for answers, not to ask questions and then go on the website that I can't reach to get the answers. And you guys, and you should have answers to these questions. It's almost been three weeks now since this happened. You should have answers. The first answer is, water and sewage. That's important. Water and sewage, that's important. If we don't have that, electricity doesn't do us any good. We can't clean, we can't wash, we can't do the things we need to do. We have power washers, we have no water to use them. We've got to get water and sewage. That's number one on anybody's list. Electricity's nice. FPL's doing a great job. They're about ready to turn power on a lot of side roads. But it's not gonna do us any good. We can get a generator to get electricity. We need water and sewage. And we need a continuous and repetitive daily update of what that status is, so we can make plans. We've got remediation teams coming in, we've got tow trucks coming in, we've got movers coming in, we've got all, but you shut us down on Monday and Tuesday to run this debris truck and the utilities, and just like the lady before me, nobody, nobody. Roads were clear, no traffic, nobody. We haven't seen a garbage truck, we haven't seen a debris truck on Dundee. Zero. I've got piles 10-foot-high, all of them down that street. The road is getting narrower. Pretty soon, the truck ain't gonna get in there. People need to have a steady status report. Number two, what is the plan for this debris mover? When can we plan to have that truck on our street so we can make sure we got stuff out of the way? So we can make sure all the utility trucks and all the people we're working with are out of the way? Number three, garbage service. It's getting worse by the day. There's no reason why the garbage trucks are not running daily up and down these streets. You've got 1,000 other vehicles running. Put a garbage truck down. Number four, mail service. Nobody's even talked about it. I've got medications I get from the VA. I can't get them. I gotta drive all the way up to Cape Coral to get my medications. Okay? We need mail service, we need UPS service, we need the FedEx. Number five, what about all the debris in our backyards? What about all the debris in our canals? That stuff's packed up 15-feet-high. We can't move it. It's docks, it's boats, it's cars. Who's gonna take care of that and when? It's been three weeks. No answers. Seven, what about the working people that are trying to stay on this island? You guys are closing the island down on Monday and Tuesday. They can't go to work. What is that? They need to go to work. They need to pay their bills. They don't want to leave their house and go stay in a hotel while you guys are doing this. My time is up. I wish we could get answers for this.
Good afternoon. I think you called me, Chris Patrica?
No.
Oh, I thought you called me.
No. Sorry. You're next, though.
Good try, though.
Bob Miller is who I'm calling. Bob Miller. You're after me.
No answers?
I'll give you one answer. The biggest part of that question was about debris removal on the street?
And water. Water.
I'm gonna answer the one that I can answer first. The debris removal, believe it or not, is being managed by Lee County. So all the questions about debris removal should be directed to Lee County. I'm just, I am, okay, okay. Madam Clerk, you want to call the next, please? I'm not gonna answer.
Bob Miller?
Good afternoon, everybody. I feel your pain. Most of my questions was answered, but I do have a couple things that we really need to drive home here. And that is, what are you gonna let us do? Building permits, we need someplace to go, someone to talk to. We hear rumors about the 50-50 rule, and then we hear that it's accumulative. That if you spent, let's say you have $100,000 in damage, and you can spend 50, but you spent 25 on a remodel. Do we get to spend 50, or do we get to spend 25? Those are very small numbers, I realize. But we need an answer if that is accumulative or not. And we need the island opened back up. Sunday, I was here, working on my property, and I saw two things that was very disturbing. There was somebody out in my junk pile, two guys, a guy and a gal, I didn't recognize them, and they're digging through my trash. They didn't look like a neighbor. So I asked them if I could help them. What are they looking for? And their response was, and I quote, "Things we can sell in the flea market." People are coming on the island that are not residents. Sunday, the same day, I went up to see my friend Tom's house, and I saw three motorcycles riding down Astero. They were doing nothing but sightseeing. We need to get the island open to the residents? Checking IDs. I've been on the island, you and I've had words. I've been on the island every day I've been able to be there. I've never been asked. I've been waved through. A wristband showing you're a resident. Something. I'm from the Midwest. I moved down here for my retirement. When we have debris on the streets and stuff, we close the streets for a day. You just can't park in them. You park in your own driveway. There's a lot of debris here. God knows it needs moved. We've got to get on the island to our houses, and we gotta keep the people from looting our homes. I have had things gone, stolen. I look forward to the answers in the next day or so. And I will drive out to wherever I have to go to get on the internet. But I haven't seen the website updated. Thank you for your time.
Chris Patrissa?
It's, in my defense, it's really hard to hear in that corner over there. My name is Chris Patrica. I'm here from the Lee County School Board. I just want to update you all on the progress we've made with Fort Myers Beach Elementary School. I want to start by saying that I understand how much this community loves that school, and it is very much in the front of our minds and really deep in my heart. I represent you all here on the beach. Very much in the front of our minds, and no update is given to me in a one-on-one with the superintendent without me asking specifically about Fort Myers Beach Elementary. So, the students went back to school this week. They are in a temporary, temporary location at Fort, I'm sorry, at San Carlos Elementary School. I say temporary, temporary, because that is not going to be a long-term solution for our students from Fort Myers Beach Elementary. We chose San Carlos because we were able to keep the entire school community together. The teachers are there, the principal is there, all 80 students are there. So they didn't lose their school community. They lost their school building for now, but they did not lose their school community. The temporary solution will be finding a location closer to the beach where we can put some trailers for a temporary location for the beach school. Long-term, we don't yet know whether we're looking at a gut and refurbishment of the school, whether we're looking at a complete teardown and rebuilding of the school. We don't know if we're looking at a partial teardown and partial rebuild of the school. We are simply too early in the process to be able to make those determinations. But we will put announcements out, and we will definitely keep you all updated. And we invite the participation of community members in any decision-making that happens from this point forward. And if you have any questions at all about transportation to and from San Carlos Park Elementary on the Mondays and Tuesdays that the island is closed, if you're living on the island and you have to bring your kids to the school and you're afraid about not being able to get back onto the island, please contact Dr. Kohler, the principal. Contact her directly. She has information for you that she's willing and happy to share. And if you have any other general questions, please reach out to me directly. Again, my name is Chris Patrica. Chris, I'm sorry, I'm gonna spell my email. C-H-R-I-S, N is in Nancy, P is in Paul. Chris NP@leeschools.net. And my telephone number is area code 518-281-2283. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks so much for coming out, Chris, our elected school board representative. And I failed to mention, is Commissioner Sandelli still with us here? Ray, are you still here?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. I just wanted to acknowledge that Commissioner Sandelli was in the house as well. Next, Madam Clerk.
Patty Concorde, I'm sorry, from Bayview.
I'm Patty Corn. I live at 24 Bayview Boulevard, Fort Myers Beach. Used to be. I've been here 40 years also, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I was five at the time, but... But I'm representing the board. I'm on the board of Fairview Isles.
Thank you.
And I, yes. And I would like to say that my neighbors and myself were all concerned. We're cleaning out our houses, we're getting busy, we're doing as much as we can. But now, we're telling, you know, there's some kind of map going around that's condemning places and making majors. So, yeah, so people have that. So is that a real thing? No, we don't know, since there's really, but I'm a nurse, paramedic, a fireman, been all those things. And I've also helped write disaster plans. And I'd like to see the disaster plan for Fort Myers Beach. Also, we have questions about tax bills. Bills are being sent out. Is there some kind of compensation? What is the deal there? We'd also like to know where to pick up our mail. Again, we need plans, we need direction, we don't need any permitting. We need to get busy and get our damn houses back in order. Sanibel has a list. Trying to shut me up. Sanibel has evidently a plan that's been executed by an excellent mayor, and takes a woman.
Thank you for those comments. You're a heck of a gal, let me tell you. My mom was a nurse, my sister's a nurse. We have a lot of nurses in our family as well, and I appreciate the nurses. I just want to answer one of your questions, and this is one that, of course, everyone is concerned, and it's about your property taxes. The governor's press conference that I was just at, he announced major news about the ad valorem taxes that will be due. So you want to listen to that tonight, or get on, if you can, get on the internet and read about it. But he is coming out with a plan for relief with the property taxes. So stay tuned for that. Next, Madam Clerk.
Patrick Van Ass.
That's the other thing, the other part of that question is, and it's been asked a few times about the mail. The mail is, the mail for beach addresses is being delivered at... Loop Jet, on Loop Jet, Jet Loop, Jet Loop.
And they have a whole entrance where you can just walk in, and it says Fort Myers Beach, and they have dedicated people that are just doing Fort...
Okay, thank you. Patrick?
Hello, Patrick Van Ass, beach resident, LPA member. One quick comment. I just want to inform everybody that I have personally, I have personally reached out to the American Planning Association. I'm a professional planner. I am part of that membership. The Florida chapter is willing to help us. Reached out throughout the country and throughout Florida for expertise, for people that have gone through a similar experience. Bring these people down here and provide us some advice. Talk about pros and cons, talk about what's worked, what hasn't worked elsewhere. So that is in motion. I have contacted our local chapter also for Southwest Florida. They are very supportive, and they're doing everything they can to get this moving forward. Jason Green, your planner, is in the loop. I know that Jason mentioned that he's personally reached out to a lot of people, personally other planners throughout the state with some experience. But I think it's very important that we do a public workshop, that this is completely transparent, that the public can listen in, the public can ask questions, and that we get, again, input from multiple sources. And then, as a town, as a council, we make decisions that fit our needs and our circumstances. So, thank you.
Next, Madam Clerk.
Susan Elliott?
Susan Elliott?
She's coming.
Okay, all right.
Hi. First of all, I want to thank you for having the meeting today. I think it's been super delayed. I don't appreciate that part, but I do appreciate being able to stand in front of you today. Second of all, I want to say thank you to Dan Allers, as he is the only person in front of me that I've seen on the island. Okay. Unfortunately, I made a really bad decision, and my family, including my two adult sons, my daughter-in-law, my two grandchildren, stayed on the island for the storm. It, you know, obviously was life-changing, and I'm still in a very traumatized state. But even at that traumatized state, I've been able to come up with a plan for my family. And I'm asking the same of all of you, because we have no plan, as you've heard. The morning after the storm, when I was completely lost and completely distraught, I see Dan Allers pushing his way on a bicycle down Astero Boulevard, ready to answer questions and ready to help out. That meant the world to me. I will forever be indebted to this man. I did not purposely take any of his help, because he was hurting as bad as we were, and had just found out that, you know, he had lost everything as well. My family, without Beach Talk Radio, would not know anything. Literally, nothing. My family did not know for three full days that we were alive. Did not know. We had five houses in the middle of our street on Coconut Drive, and not one damn person walked down that street for three full days. And I was there. there. I was outside. I was inside. I was on other streets. I rescued two people on Estero Boulevard. I personally looked for Mitch and Marty with my husband and my neighbors. We knew the whole story, and nobody was there to listen to our story. For two days, we begged every police officer we saw and every town person that we saw to drive our grandchildren, who are four and six, off the island to allow them to not be further traumatized, in which we were completely turned down. We had to find, thanks to Mike Drum at Reflow Plumbing, who my son works for, we finally found a beach cart torn up in someone's yard and blew the tires up, and my son pushed those babies three miles off of the bridge so that somebody could walk them to safety. It's unacceptable. Those people were driving 80 miles an hour down Estero Boulevard the second it was cleared and waving at us from their damn air conditioning vehicles. Nothing was at Publix. No water, no help. Fine, I made the choice. I stayed. It was my mistake. But somebody could have helped my grandchildren, because they did not make that decision. Their grandmother did. It's unacceptable. We were prepared as far as water and food, so we did survive, and we stayed until Sunday, when a rescue team finally came to check on us, that my dad signed us up for during the storm. Again, didn't see anyone else. It's unbelievable. And now, we have a curfew of nine to five. My youngest son lives on Widgeon Terrace. He's a homeowner. He's 24 years old. He put $75,000 freaking thousand dollars down in his house to live on Fort Myers Beach. And he's displaced. And he can't get there, because you know what? They have jobs. Nine to five doesn't work. They have jobs. They have bills to pay. Because guess what? FEMA and insurance hasn't helped at all. The debris. I would invite you all to drive down Coconut Drive if you want to see a show. Everybody else is, because it's no residents on the beach. It's everybody else driving by and taking videos. You can get on YouTube, and you can Google it, and you can see us all there in the mountains of debris, because nobody else is picking it up. We have had two trucks each time. Take a little bit and leave. Unacceptable. I was on the island from Wednesday to Sunday. I never one time saw a diver in the bay. We're one driveway from the bay. Not one time did I see a diver. I am so sick of hearing how many people were rescued off Fort Myers Beach. They were driven off Fort Myers Beach. No debris was gone through. No divers were in the bay. No quiet boats were driving up and down the mangroves for our neighbors that were probably still alive. There were helicopters. There were no quiet boats. I sat there and I watched it all in complete disbelief. It's unacceptable. You turn us to Lee County. How many times have you called Lee County for help? Because I believe I've watched, I moved here three years ago and started my own real estate company, which I lost, but I will build again. And I've heard during many town meetings, you shy away from calling the county. I know Karen Woodson. I know Dan Allers. I know some other people that like to institute the help from Lee County, but you don't do it personally, so don't make the suggestion to us. You're our voice, and you should be the one contacting Lee County and reporting back to us. You say that you're not worried about the future of FMB. Well, let me tell you, I am a Realtor. And on every stupid road, there is a sign of people wanting to scoop up our properties as-is. Those people should not be on our island. They should not be there. You're allowing it. We all stood in line the days before the storm to get passes to get back on the island. They haven't been checked once. Keep these people off our island. Let us do our work. Let us build our communities and our lives back without the disruption of them. You wouldn't have to close on Monday and Tuesday if it was just residents every day. We calmly left for Monday and Tuesday, and when we came back on Wednesday morning, somebody cut all of our trees down. All of them. We have no privacy, no nothing. And it wasn't just the trees that are in the electric company's way. It was our new $400 Foxtail palms that are in the front of our house. They're all gone. I'm not leaving if I can't trust that you're going to keep our town safe.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Mike McDonald.
Mike McDonald, 179 Sable Drive. My wife Amy and I bought a home here 18 months ago. This is our future. This is where we want to retire. I served 24 years in the Omaha Fire Department. Six of those years as fire chief. I'm currently a state senator for the state of Nebraska. I know about constituency service. I don't think anybody runs for elected office and plans on doing a bad job. I don't. I don't know you people. I'm here to try to help. I'm here to offer my experience to try to help you. First question, have you discussed having night work? Working at night? Don't close down the, don't close down the island on Monday, Tuesday. You should have a daily meeting. Not next Tuesday, a daily meeting. And don't do it at 2:00 in the afternoon, where we all have to stop working. 6:00 PM, start at 7:00, 7:00 AM, 6:00 AM. But you should be standing here with us every day, trying to answer our questions. And I understand, you're not going to have all the answers. And I understand also, if you're pleasing everyone, you're lying to someone. So, you're not going to please all of us. I understand that. But you got to communicate. Communication is the key to successful business, and you're not communicating. My other suggestion would be, when you offer services to your workers, to your employees, which is great, you have to offer those to the residents at the same level or higher. The question I have is, who made the decision to shut down basic human services to people on the island because they were residents? If you're a resident, oh, you can't go in there. You can't go into Tent City, if you're a resident. But you can go down the street, or go down to the street by the church. There is showers. There's restrooms. There's no food service down there. But it's not to the same level of what you are letting other people take advantage of that aren't residents. You have to raise those, who, what kind of human being, knowing that some of these people lost everything? They have nothing left. What kind of human being says, "Let's take away a little dignity from them," when they want a shower at the end of the day? When they want a hot meal, let's take that away from them? What kind of human being would make that decision about other human beings? Please, I'm here to try to help you. I know you don't want to do a bad job, but you are. You are doing a bad job. You've got subject matters, subject matter experts in this room. You've got Ron Benoch, who was a retired assistant chief in Omaha. You've got Jeff Johnson, it says the eighth hurricane, owned DAKI at one time. You've got so many people that want to help you. If you would just communicate with us, be with us daily.
Senator, you're going to have to wrap it up.
Okay.
You've taken your time.
Hey, I want to help. We can't do anything about the past. We can go from here forward. I'm here to try to help you.
I appreciate the offer. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Mike Markham. Markham? Markham? He's coming from the back.
Say the next person's name, so that they can already be ready to be aftered as man.
Yep.
Good idea.
Lisa Lademan. She's right here.
Hi, Mike Markham. I live down in Fairview Isles, 15 Palm View. First of all, as many others have mentioned, security on the island. When I moved down here 12 years ago, we were told we needed a hurricane pass to get back on the island. I've got one of those purple little things. I think you guys charged me 20 bucks or something for it. And then I had to renew it, and it was a pain in the ass to do it. Had to beg somebody to meet me at the office to get it. And now, anybody, like they said, is driving up and down this island. We get ready to leave here last night, after working until 7:00 on the house. I missed the south exit by nine minutes. And the people down in Benea Beach have the sheriff sitting there, and unless you're a resident, you can't drive south after 7:00. It's closed. We need to close this island down to everybody except residents and the people that are helping them remediate or work on their houses. I mean, that, and it would get half the traffic off. I mean, I watch the same damn pickup trucks drive up and down my street multiple times a day, and each time they go by, they got more shit in the bed. Fishing poles hanging out the back, whatever. You know, they're picking it up out of the junk piles. The next thing is a permitting process. It was almost impossible to get a permit from you guys before the hurricane. I've got one pending right now, that I've been trying to get, for a damn little footer wall to square off my patio in the backyard. And I mean, you can't get it. Hell, I went down to City Hall one time, two permits ago, and I couldn't get in the door because of COVID. You had it locked, couldn't get in. Some guy drives up wanting turtle eggs. Three people meet him at the door, bring him inside. They're all shucking and jiving. I followed him in. Finally, they looked at me and said, "What do you want?" I said, "I need to talk to somebody about this permit." Nobody was friendly to me. But I got my questions answered. And so, the last thing on the permit, we need to know how we can get power back on. There's a lot of confusing stuff out there. We're supposed to get a structural inspection, which I did. You're supposed to get electrical inspection. I did. I got the letters. But now, I'm told that the Corps of Engineers is going around doing inspections, and FEMA's done an inspection. Who do I provide these permits to? And how do I get my power and water and everything turned back on? And, you know, with the magnitude of the destruction, it's going to be two to five years at least before everybody starts really getting going and building back. We need to be able to pull our motor home, or whatever in the driveway, hook up the temporary power, if that's what it takes. I mean, I've already got the bid for it. I'm ready to go. But I don't know who to talk to or when it's going to happen. We need, we need answers.
That's key.
Thank you.
Lisa Lademan?
Logman.
Logman, sorry.
Hi, I'm with Cutlass 18372.
Excuse me, just a moment. Up after Lisa is Rick Lowery.
Sure. I live at Cutlass 18372, Cutlass Drive, right down the street. Also, a business owner on Fort Myers Beach. We, we own Norm's Beach Parking, my brother and I do, and Yotaco was there, and Ridgeump, they're gone. And the Sandal Factory, you know, the old West Coast surf shop that was one of our buildings, too. Also demolished. So, what I'd like to ask you about, I want to talk to you about the permitting process. What I don't understand is, aren't there like federal trailers everywhere? You just call up and you say, "Hey, we need trailers." Why can't we have a trailer for permitting? And the process is so difficult and so cumbersome with you guys. Why don't you, can't we go through Lee County temporarily for the next year to get our permits instead of going through the beach? Wouldn't that be a more efficient way? There's so much on the plate right now. Why not take one of those things off the plate and give it to somebody else? And I don't care if it's Lee County. I really don't care. But there should be a trailer and a company or somebody that can handle the permitting process for us to speed things up. Another thing that was interesting, FPNL, who is using our lot as a staging area for free, there's no shower trucks down there for people. There's no laundry trucks. FPNL owns all of these, because I went to it, up at Walmart. They have them up there. Which is fine, okay. But why don't we have those on Fort Myers Beach? They had a huge trailer truck filled with washer and dryers that you could use for free. Okay? We need that on Fort Myers Beach, frankly. And they also had a large trailer for showers with running hot water. We could use that on Fort Myers Beach. And since they're willing to put them up there, we're, they're using our lot for free. Stick it there. It's right on the middle of the island, right by the Lonnie Kai. We're offering, we're saying, "Get some of this stuff done." The other question that I have is, why isn't FEMA at any of these meetings? And I love our governor, but he needs to be at a few of these meetings. And I don't know if you have a way of getting him in touch, because there's a few questions that he could answer that you guys probably can't, you know, or don't have the ability. But I do believe that if we're going to do these meetings, he needs to be at these meetings. And we're not Sanibel. We're not Naples.
I want to thank you. You've exceeded your time. And I also want to thank you, Chris, for stepping up and helping out FPL. That's a, that's a great thing you're doing. Your father would be very proud of you.
Rick Lowery.
Rick. My name is Rick Lowery. I've been a resident here for about 20 years. I am a survivor of the storm. I did lose everything. I have nothing left. And I've been looted three times since this happened. I've arrested three individuals, with a man with nothing left, losing everything I own, and every person that walks on my property doesn't belong here. They're not a state contractor. They're not a hurricane pass person. They don't belong on our island to begin with. And this happens all day long. I keep losing more and more every day, because I'm out trying to help other people, leaving my property alone while it gets ransacked on a daily basis. I wish you could do something about that, but even more important is this permitting process. As he mentioned before, the other people, the permitting process was screwed up before we even got here. It took years for me to permit the process in which I built my home and finished it the way it was. It was screwed up. It didn't work. And now, we have more setback issues that are going to deal with in the new problems. These problems need to be eliminated immediately. All the problems with permitting need to disappear. How long it takes, the bull crap we have to go through, the crap we have to jump over, the hurdles we have to embrace are crazy. The contractors can't get this island built unless we have your guys' help. So, we have to rely on you guys at this point. We have nobody else to help us with $250,000 in our pocket to build a home back. We need your help, not your arguments. Not the crap that we see on a weekly basis in these meetings between setbacks and things like that. They got to disappear at this point. We got to have the opportunity to build our homes back quickly and accurately. And I understand there's rules. That's fine. We'll follow them. But we can't wait a year for something to happen on your end. And I know that it's staffing issues and things like that. I understand that. I've been in business my whole life. But this has got to stop here and now. And you got to find help that's qualified and able to handle the situation. To sit on 300 applications for electrical for two or three days, because you can only handle 30 a day, is wrong. People should be able to get their electric turned on as soon as they turn in that information. There should be somebody saying, "Bam, it's on. You got it." To wait two weeks for something to happen is unreal. We are dying out there to get our homes back. We have nothing left. And some of you guys are in the same situation. I know it.
All right, Rick.
So, please help us. Please. That's all we're asking. Please.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Rick. I appreciate that. I do want to, I do want to answer one question. This has come up several times today, and I want to answer this one question. It's a, it's a question of staffing, you know, not having enough adequate people here to do the job. We're being supplemented here on a daily basis. These assets are coming in from up north. They're coming in from FEMA. They're coming in from ever. Every one of our department heads has put out a list of how many people they need. There are dozens and dozens and dozens of these plan reviewers and other people that are, that are going to be necessary to get everything back up and running. They're coming. They're on their way in right now. So, all, it's not just our little 50-person town staff, although they're doing a great job. It's not just going to be that staff. We're going to be supplemented by hundreds of other, hundreds of other bodies that are going to be helping us do the job. And they're on their way, believe me.
Hi. Thank you for having this meeting. I know it's not a good position for any of us. And like one gentleman said, losing my voice, you want to do the right thing. But I'm going to tell you this. I have two properties up in Matlachay that was hit hard. Not quite as hard, much smaller town, but it was hit hard. Homes are standing, little cement fortresses, two new roofs. I had a roofing company come in. The permitting process, it takes three days. Three days in Lee County. They're getting the roof started two days from now. So, I'm just saying, and it might not be a popular statement, but I'm telling you, I just, I would want you guys to just consider perhaps maybe unincorporating and going back to Lee County, where they could properly manage this town. I think they want us, and I totally support that. But I do appreciate everything you guys are doing. And, oh, there's, I didn't realize the town manager. No one's asking you questions, Roger. I didn't know you were there. I'm going to run out of time. Thanks.
Madam Clerk.
Madam Clerk.
That's all I have signed up for.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak before we close this portion of the public comment off? Yes, come up. Come up to the microphone, please, ma'am. Please state your name.
My name is Alexandra Bryan, I live in 140 Mid Island Drive. And I just would like to see, since we are meeting next Tuesday, if we can have some of these questions answered by Tuesday in person instead of putting them in the website and people don't have access for the website.
I will make that a priority.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Come on up, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Dr. John Albert, 19 Palmview. Let me say that before the hurricane, we're talking about permitting process, before the hurricane, my brother-in-law bought the home next to me. He looked at my home and said, "Your home is great, it's gorgeous. If you can do to my home what you did to your home, I'll buy that." And I said, "Go ahead, let's go it again." Do you know your permitting process is so hindrous in getting anything done that the people in the room know it, but I've got news for you, it's a bigger circle. You can't get contractors that come on the island. When I call contractors, they say, "What's the address? 21 Palmview." We don't service Fort Myers Beach. Click. I've gone through dozens of contractors, whether it be seawall, swimming pool, swimming pool is almost impossible, and general contractors, they don't want to touch us. They don't want anything to do with us. And it's all because of permitting. I rest my case.
Thank you, Doctor. Steve? Okay, you, then you.
All right. Ron Bennett, 210 Sterling Avenue. I don't know if there's the relationship between the town of Fort Myers Beach and Lee County, but I was at the foot of the bridge when you guys had this little bus thing to allow us to come on and grab our stuff, okay? And we started that in the morning, and then about 2:30 you guys had a press conference that we're going to go ahead and open it up. You opened it up to everybody. I don't understand that, why you open this island up to everybody? And I know it's been said, but it's got to be said again. Use our hurricane passes for the residents. It's simple. It's driver's license, but that morning, there's a disconnect between here and Lee County, there is. I don't know what it is, but we saw it that Saturday morning when the bus fiasco got over and you opened up the island and "Thank you very much for opening up our island to us." The other thing too is, one suggestion I'd like is, grab everybody's phone number here, and then maybe you can text us and get us, since we can't have, okay? But that's just a suggestion.
Ma'am? Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Council. As always, I'd like to thank you all for everything you do for our town. I know each and every one of you really does everything you can for our town and the people. I know it's a thankless job, but I still will thank you. My name is Tim Shadle, and I'm an island resident, and an island resident that lost my home like many of us others on the island. And there are a couple of things. I'd like to talk about the access to the island. I hear rules that are announced, and to be honest with you, they're not really followed as announced. And I could say that personally because I came to the island for the first time after my home was destroyed on Sunday morning. I came at 4 o'clock in the morning, and I thought I was going to come early because I would be waiting in a long line, but I was the only one in the line at that time. I showed my ID, said I'm an island resident, and I was permitted to come onto the island. And I appreciated that, but I know that isn't what was announced. But I just want to say that there should be some type of a system for access for the residents and the workers and people that, you know, adjusters and things like that that need to be here. And it doesn't only have to be the hurricane pass. Maybe the officers could have some kind of a pass that once you show them an identification and you can prove that you're an island resident or you belong here, you post that in your vehicle. Because I know that it could slow down traffic quite a bit if you have to ask everybody every time that they come to the island for your ID. And we want to keep traffic moving, so I think there should be a way that you can identify quickly those people that belong here and allow them to get on quickly. The only other thing I'd like to say is, I've brought this up many times in past councils and with this council, not only verbally in meetings, but in writing. I wish the town would cooperate with the county much more. And I wish the county would be open to that. And I have a suggestion. There is a county commissioner in this room right now, and you acknowledged him. And I personally just spoke with him. And I asked him, "Is there anything by law that permits him from speaking at this meeting right now?" And he said, "No." But he was observing, taking notes, and I'm sure that he's going to take all these to heart and try to come up with solutions for a lot of things that people are saying here right now. But I wish the commissioner would take the opportunity right now to step up to this microphone and talk to the people and start a relationship with the people of this town and our town council. That's it. Thank you very much.
I just, I want to tell you, I just want to tell you something about, the commissioner is welcome to speak anytime he wishes. And if Commissioner Sandelli wishes to come up and say something, he'll have the floor. There's never a doubt. And as far as getting along and cooperating with the county, you know, we've never cooperated more with the county than we have in the past three weeks. It's been a daily communication. We have people with the county with us all day long, embedded with us down at the town hall. So there's a lot of cooperation going on. Sir, go over ahead and speak.
Thank you. I'm Mike Homewood, I live in Fort Myers, and I'm down here working every day. And it seems like this meeting was going to be a good way for me to find out some questions from Florida Light and Power, the county, and everybody. And it seems like with this table here, we should have set them up with people that could be answering questions and stuff. Because we just need a lot of answers.
Thank you for that.
Do you think Tuesday they could incorporate somebody from Florida Light and Power here?
Well, we probably could. And I appreciate the suggestion. Is there anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Ma'am?
Kathy Koba, 5 Palmview. You just made a comment, Mayor, that we have all these resources coming in. I think it's wonderful, but I hope that there's a plan for all these resources, because I've been involved in smaller disasters, and different people come in and they're not always coordinated. And we do not need less coordination. We need to have it somehow organized and that the people who are coming in are efficient. Not just, you know, they're sending 100 people to work with permits here and they don't know our permit policy or whatever. So I hope that there's a big effort put into organizing that.
Anyone else?
Somebody mentioned water and sewer. My name's Fred Murphy, I live on 229 Sterling Avenue. There's power on this island, and I know you have to have certification to get it, which you should. The engineer I'm not so sure about, because all of us are smart enough to know whether we should hook power to our house or not. The people on this island rescued the other people on this island that needed help long before search and rescue got here. They're the ones that should be rewarded for that and recognized. Second, we need sewer and water, like the gentleman over here said. United States of America, you can't get those sewers pumps working and off the island in three weeks' time? There's nothing around to get that fixed? Water. This is a brand-new system. Everything's new. How could it be busted up? Why don't we have water? That's your responsibility, yours too. And I haven't seen it happen yet. It's getting a little bit late.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sylvia Slaven, I'm here with my husband Scott Slaven. I'm at 5 Fairview Isles, we're down south. I feel, I've been here for, we've been here for two years, I feel everyone here is extremely upset. I feel like I want to just pick up and just leave and go back west, but if everyone here, please, let's get this governor and this sheriff, Carmine, here Tuesday. Can you please do that for all of us that are very unhappy? We need to see the governor. How I'm feeling now and how everyone's feeling here, please, bring this governor to hear our voices.
Thank you. And thank you, Sylvia. I appreciate the comments. And in the governor's defense, he has been here a few times already, and he was here again today, but if we know when he's coming and he's willing to take a larger audience, I think that's a great idea.
Please have him here Tuesday with the sheriff.
Well, I can't tell the governor what to do, and I can't tell the sheriff what to do, but I can certainly ask. I can certainly ask.
How about this radio, Beach Radio Talk, can we all send him messages?
There you go.
Bring the governor here.
There you go. All right. Okay, thank you. Yes.
Good afternoon, thank you. This is, I'm Jennifer Walker. Lady and gentlemen of the council, thank you so much. I've seen you out and about. I have seen, thank you. I just want to speak for the homeowners who are legacy families or new families on legacy lots that are half lots, little old stilts houses. If they are to rebuild with the setback requirements as they currently stand, they'll be building little vertical elevator shafts. So I just want to speak, whether it's you raise it to the governor or the county, that people are allowed to rebuild the footprint that pre-existed the hurricane. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Hi, my name is Diana McDonald. First and foremost, I just want to let everyone know how sorry I am that all of this has happened. But I'm actually a property manager, I'm not even a resident on the island, but I do represent 330 somewhat owners on the island. And I would like to just go back, and you know, it's beating a dead horse, but through the Monday through Friday, or the Monday and Tuesday on the days off, that is very hindering to getting things done in a timely fashion because I can't get my contractors out there. I'm sitting myself, I live four miles from the bridge, three hours and 40 minutes some days last week to get onto that island. And I live 15 minutes from the properties. I've got to get these contractors out there to get your island building back better, and I really would like you just to think about these Monday and Tuesday hours, because it's very hindering. I can't get the contractors myself, and I already have them in contracts.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Yes?
Betty Russell, 9 Bayview Boulevard in 4 Fairview Isles. I would just like to know how much emphasis we should put on this map that is being circulated through experience. It is showing my house as being slated for possible demolition. It's showing it as an orange. I know the red is a goner, but we're putting out money now, so what do we need to know about this map?
Could you do me a favor and show the clerk that map, please? This lady right here? And then we'll take it down. Yeah, yep. Anyone else? Yes, sir? Commissioner Sandelli.
Good afternoon. One of the great mentors in my life said, "Listen well, have empathy for who's across the table, and then communicate well." So I came here today, one, to pay respect to all of you. I love the beach, I don't live on the beach. I wanted to thank all of you for your patience, and I understand your frustrations. This leadership team in front of you is not perfect, we're not perfect at the county. We talk almost every day. I stood in the back of the room and I took a full page of notes. First part is, understand what the issues are. And I had talked to Representative Botana, and we said, "Let's take these issues, let's take the top three or five, and let's put together the best resources to answer those questions, to help, you know, with the council here to answer some of your questions." And that's what we're going to do. I didn't come down here, I didn't ask for time, because this is your time. This is your time to ask questions, and it's your time from the leadership on the beach to answer those. We've been working since day one, eight, you know, seven days a week, a whole bunch of hours, and that doesn't make us anything special. I can guarantee you, we're doing everything we can. You know, it's, none of us wished this happened, we're going to have to deal with it. And I'm convinced, you know, that we will be better for it. It's going to take some challenge, it's going to take some chimes, it's going to take some patience. We will be better not only as a town, we're going to be better as a culture, because people are out working for each other, looking out for each other. So I'll be over here if you have any additional questions. These are my notes. I'll try to synthesize it, Adam and I will get together, we'll try to come back with some answers and personnel to help the council here and to help all of you. Thank you for being who you are. This is a very special place on Fort Myers Beach, and I'm proud to be associated with all of you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner, Mr. Mayor, if I may ask him just a real quick question? I know we don't normally do that. Commissioner Sandelli, since we have you here, one of the issues that came up that maybe you can opine on or you can't yet is the map that they're talking about with the dots. Some people are off, you know, my phone has been ringing off the hook today based on just that map. I don't know if you're prepared or if you can speak as to what that means, just to maybe help alleviate some of the questions.
I'm not that familiar with the map, but if you'll show it to me. I was out with Seminole Railroad today, and I came right from there, tried to make this meeting here. Be happy to take a look at it. I've heard about it, I haven't studied it. Pardon me? Well, I think, I think the- I understand. Pardon me? I wouldn't want to put anything out that's misinformation, okay? Because I think that's the thing that hurts us the most, when we put information out that's not accurate.
Ray, I want to thank you for your leadership and, more importantly, your friendship throughout this whole thing. Thank you very much. Thanks for coming down. Okay, we're going to move on now. Yeah, no, no, Jennifer? We've already been through the loop once. You'll have more opportunities. There's more public comment later on in the agenda if you have more questions. So we're going to move on so we can keep this going. The next item on the agenda is Item A, which is the extension of the declaration of the state of local emergency. Mr. Town Attorney, would you like to lead us out on this?
Sure. Mayor, members of the council, as well as members of the public, under state law, as well as the town code, the city has the ability to declare a state of local emergency, and did so before the storm, when the storm track started to shift further south. In many respects, the contents of the town code and the emergency declaration mirror almost virtually state law as to what are the authorities of a local government when the state has declared a state of emergency, which the governor did, and then also then allows the town to invoke its emergency powers, which, as I said, are virtually identical to what the state statute says. And so the difference is that the governor gets to issue a declaration, and that declaration is good until the governor rescinds it, and it can be months, if not years, particularly in a situation like this, before the governor gets around to rescinding his order. Unfortunately, we have to renew it in seven-day increments. And so that's what's before you, is the renewal of that declaration of a state of local emergency. And the reason why it's critical- And the reason why it's critical for this community to renew that on the rolling basis that is allowed under your code and state law is that by doing so, it allows us to stay eligible for FEMA reimbursement and, and state and federal funding for all the things it's going to take to put this community back together, um, stronger and better, um, hopefully than, than before Hurricane Ian. And so that is why the resolution is before you, um, this, uh, this afternoon.
Okay. So I'll put it to the council. Is there a motion to, uh, to extend the resolution of the, uh, declaration of state of local emergency?
So moved.
Mr. Mayor, if you could read the res, title of the resolution to the record.
You know, I don't have it.
Oh, sorry.
Would you read it, please?
Clerk.
Give her a mic. Give her a mic.
Okay, it's Resolution 22-36, a resolution of the town, of council of the town of Fort Myers Beach, Florida, amending and extending the proclamation that a state of local emergency exists because of the catastrophic impacts caused by Hurricane Ian, providing for conflicts, providing for Scrivener errors, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. I will, uh, ask the council again, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
So second.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion?
Just have a question, Mr. Mayor. Sorry. Just have a question.
Procedure question.
Oh, boy, that's-
Just use your raise.
Just a procedural question. Under item B, restoration of-
Hello?
Just a, just a procedural question. Uh, under item B, restoration of Fort Myers Beach, a number of the questions that have been asked today, I don't think some of these folks need to wait until Tuesday. I think town staff or the town manager can ask those questions. Is it the town manager's, uh, intention to answer a number of the questions that were asked today?
Yes.
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 We're, we're, we're on, we're on item A.
No, I appreciate that, but I want to know ahead of time, before I vote on this, if, if, if we're, if there is going to be an attempt to try to address many of these questions today, the ones that can be, and I think there are a number of them, is that the intention of the agenda today? I understand this particular issue. Just a quick question procedurally.
Just to answer every question that we can.
Today.
Of course.
That's great. Thank you. That's all I, that's all I was curious about.
How much, how much money are you going to answer?
Is there a second? Has it been, was it seconded by Dan? It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Any objection? The motion to extend the declaration of the state of local emergency passes unanimously. The next item is, uh, item B, which is restoration of Fort Myers Beach. Town manager, would you like to start us off on this, uh, item?
Thank, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, um, it might be helpful to, um, have our, our department directors give a little report on the status of things like debris removal and, um, other matters under their purview, so we can get a quick update from them, so all these folks can hear what we've been working on and where we are. So if that, if you think that's appropriate, I'd like to begin with, um, debris removal and have Jason Freeman, our Public Works Director, come up and give you a little update on that.
Roger, real quick, as he's coming up here, as we obviously heard, communication has been a big issue. This is a good step forward. It, can, can we at least let the people know that we could get updates like this daily from the project manager or the division heads to, to keep people abreast as to what was completed and what is on the agenda to try to do for the next day? I think what I've heard so far, and I've heard for the last few weeks, is that's all they want is information and, and someone to give it to them.
Much less. Yes, at least.
All right. All right, let's, let's get through this, let's get through this portion here. Jason, go right ahead. Introduce yourself, please.
Uh, Jason Freeman, Public Works Director for the town. There we go. Can everyone hear? Are we good? Okay. Uh, debris update, is that?
Yes.
Perfect. So I just got a debris update from Crowder Gulf. We're working in conjunction with Lee County to try and move as much as we can. Uh, they did tell me that they were able to at least hit each of the accessible town side streets at least once so far. Uh, total cubic yards collected from the right-ofways, over 135,000 cubic yards as of today. Uh, that's over 2,500 loads of, uh, debris hauled out from the town right-ofways, and, uh, we've moved about 8,700 cubic yards off of the island. Uh, we had to set up a temporary debris site at our Bay Oaks Ballfields due to the south, uh, that south bridge being inaccessible, but as of today, they have started hauling also to, uh, the Lover's Key, Lee County site, right at the other base of that bridge.
And let me ask a quick question. Do you have any estimate about how much debris we're going to have to remove in total?
I do not have a figure for that.
Okay.
The answer is all, oh, oh.
So, Jason, I, I believe Crowder Gulf has said that they're going to divide the island into five and have, or something like that, and have trucks assigned to each of those five areas, and, um, obviously, um, areas that have more debris, um, will, will be augmented, well, hopefully with more equipment, as areas with less debris require less trucks. But initially, it's to have, uh, equal resources in each of the five areas, and then hopefully as, as certain areas require less, uh, work, they can re-divote those assets to other areas that have more work?
So, yeah. Correct. Yeah, so we're, we're waiting on that from Crowder. They're going to, the latest information we have is that they were going to divide into sections and then start attacking each of those sections, um, and get as much of those debris off as possible from those town right-ofways. Uh, so when I get word from Crowder Gulf, I will be happy to share that with you all.
So, Jason, first I want to thank you and your team. I see you guys out there working your butts off.
Thank you.
For anybody to think that you guys are not doing everything you can, I will stand behind you and tell you that that is absolutely not true.
Appreciate that.
So thank you for that. Um, you just mentioned the sections. Do we know what the sections would be as far as what street to what street, roughly how many vehicles will be? There's been a lot of concern raised to me that people, even though we're telling them that the streets have been passed at least once, how do we track that? Do we know that the contractors are actually doing the work? Because I could tell you, I'll just speak on my street, it doesn't look like it's been touched, quite honestly.
Sure.
So how do we, how do we, how are we tracking that? How are we understanding that they're actually doing the work that they're getting paid for?
So, uh, part of the debris removal is, uh, debris monitoring. We have Thompson Consulting, who also works with Lee County. So every pile of debris that they're picking up from the town right-ofways, there's monitors out there behind those trucks, accounting for that those trucks are full, where they're picking up from, and then they update those into a live database from Thompson Consulting, uh, who manages that, which, uh, we should be able to provide some information on, uh, which tracks everywhere that they're picking up debris every single day in real time.
Okay. And then do you have any information as far as what those sections you referred to, or is that being something that's driven by Crowder Gulf as well?
Yeah, well, probably, we probably have maps out, I would say, by early next week as to those sections. We don't have, we, they're, I think they're trying to use this first sweep to kind of size them equally based on the, the amount, amount of debris, but, um, we'll get that out to everybody as best we can over, as soon as we receive it from Crowder Gulf.
Jason, I just was wondering, if, if people have unique situations, like their street appears that it was never touched, or they have, the mayor touched on this briefly at the beginning, that there's a house or a boat-
Sure.
-in their yard that blocks access, who, who do they contact with the town to sort of try to at least communicate those concerns and address those concerns, concerns if possible, when possible?
Okay, so, um, a couple of things. Um, we, um, we remove debris from the right-ofway right now. That's, that's what we, that's what FEMA has authorized, and the state have authorized us and Lee County to do. The issue of, um, my house blew into your house, or your house, whether you want to try to, um, demolish it, that, how that's going to be handled is pending with FEMA. As the mayor alluded to earlier, we're expecting an answer very soon. Following that, we will get further guidance on how to deal with commercial properties. So we're, we're kind of waiting for that information. Um, and of course, um, how those decisions come down will affect how much debris we have and what areas generate the most debris, et cetera. So we're picking up, what we can pick up, the last count I heard was we had 20 trucks, 20 of those double side trucks with the crane in the middle-
Right.
-devoted to Fort Myers Beach. Um, so we're going to continue to, uh, press to not only get these sections and, and ask Crowder Gulf to get more assets into each of these sections, and if necessary, even bring on, uh, another company if they can't supply adequate trucks themselves.
And I appreciate that.
Contact, nobody, somebody?
So I guess my question is, is if people have a unique situation, either their street has not been addressed, or they've got a unique debris situation, who do they communicate with? What's, what's the best way to communicate that concern to the town or the county at this point?
Yeah, so, um, we're, we're trying, we're in the process, and I don't know if we quite finished it today, but we're in the process of standing up a general number back for the town. But, um, in the absence of that, very simple for now, um, email me, roger@fmbgov.com.
Anything else, Jason?
No, we're just, we're working with the state and all the other entities to, uh, to try and get this quickly as possible, but there is, as we all know, a, a large number of debris on the island. Luckily, with Lover's Key with that bridge opening up, that opens up a whole nother debris staging site that we can use to start hauling off. Yes. And as of today, I do, they did inform me that we are starting to use Lover's Key as well now.
Jason, just one last question before we go. Working with the agencies you talked about, state and, and, and the county, have they said anything to you that we could do as residents to help speed up the processes, whether it's one car coming in? Have they given you any suggestions that you could share with us that people can, can relate to their friends also, that can maybe help speed up the process?
Sure. So I think with, with debris removal, one of the most important things is separating by the categories, um, where I'm happy, I know we've been putting out some information on that. You want to separate hazardous versus, uh, the appliances versus household waste. Um, Waste Management did inform us that they're-
You can not cause it to spread out.
Please, 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 please let him, please let him finish, please. Let him finish, please.
And we're happy to share that information out to the public, uh, to, so we can try and do that the best we can, so that makes it a little bit easier, so that we're not mixing, uh, some of those wastes that really need to be separated. Um, they're willing to pick up, and they will be picking up all of that right away from the debris, but it does take a little bit of time. Um, but luckily, we have Thompson on, on our team as well that we're working with, and the county also directly works with, that tracks everything getting picked up, uh, in real time, and we'll, we'll work at, work on getting that information out to you all.
Sorry, I guess I'd have one more question, if I may, sorry. Based on what you just said, so if, if a person's property already has things mixed together, they didn't have the information to separate that last week or the week before-
Sure.
-will the debris still be picked up if it's all commingled, whether it's insulation mixed with appliances, mixed with refriger, whatever? Will it still be picked up, or do they need to separate that before it'll get picked up? Hey, I'm just asking, because I was asked the question.
All right. Just, just to be clear, the, the, in terms of debris, we're picking up all household debris, the only thing we're really trying to separate out is garbage. So if you have your daily garbage, if you're living in your stuff, keep that separate from all your construction debris. That's all we're asking. Is that, okay? And if it's mixed together, it's mixed together, but, um-
Correct.
That's the request that's been made to us, or we're relaying that same request to everybody else.
And just so people understand, we are not arbitrarily making that rule. If we don't have stuff separated properly, FEMA will not reimburse us. Is that correct?
All right, Jason.
All right, well, 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 to answer-
I hear they had 20 trucks allocated to this-
Fred, Fred, please. Fred, please. They're, they're all, they're all good questions, and they're going to be addressed. All your, all your questions are going to be addressed. But we have to, we have to, we have to keep-
The house today.
Okay. Jason, are you, are you, are you all done with your report?
I am.
Okay, thank you very much. Roger, who's your next department head?
Well, let's have Kristy Corey for, for the water questions, the utility questions.
Thank you, sir. Kristy Corey, Utilities Director for town of Fort Myers Beach. Um, I will address all your questions. So just for your information, council, we received water from Benita Springs Utilities on Tuesday, the 10th. That's when we received water. We are consecutive system. We don't treat our own water. We don't have our own water. We have to receive it from either Lee County Utilities or Benita Springs Utilities. Benita Springs Utilities was ready on the 10th. That's when we started receiving water. We made it down to the north end of the island, all the way to Bodich, two days ago. Our main is pressurized. We're staying at 60 PSI. At this point, we had to first go down the main and make sure that our main was intact and in place. That's what we had to start off by doing. The next section will be the side streets. I cannot simply go to someone's house and turn on their water. I can't do it. It's impossible. I have service lines down streets. I have mains down street. If there are mains opened up, all I will do is create a flooding hazard. I have no desire to do that to people who have already been devastated. So we will go street by street. We will start tomorrow, and we will go street by street and see where. We have a particular road, Madera, that has, our main is actually out of the ground. I can't fix that by myself. We have Miami Dade Utilities here that is doing an amazing job, and I'm sorry. They are working so hard, and my staff is out here seven days a week, working 12 to 14 hours a day. We're doing our best that we can do for these residents. I am not trying to not give anybody water, but I can only do the best I can. And we're trying. And I am sorry. I get emails, and the people are upset, and I'm sorry, but I can't just go on and turn a valve to somebody's house to get them water.
You're doing a hell of a good job. Yes, I am.
Thank you. We have a plan, and I promise, I promise we'll get it. I promise we'll get you there.
Okay, Kristy, hold on one second now. Any questions from the council for Kristy?
Kristy, I, I think, having a utility background, I think you, you've been doing yeoman's work. Help people understand, obviously, water comes first. Help them to understand how wastewater will then follow. Just help them understand the system and the timing as it relates to the water and the wastewater.
Absolutely. So I think most people are aware that, um, the sewer is owned by Lee County. So the town of Fort Myers Beach owns the water and the stormwater. Lee County owns the sewer system or the wastewater. Um, they let me know about, actually, the day that we brought on water on Tuesday, they let me know that they were ready. Now, when I say ready, I mean generators and whatnot. Clearly, they're not fully energized for their lift stations and whatnot, which has been a huge fear of mine from the get-go, when we start supplying homes with water and they start flushing toilets and taking showers. It does scare me a little bit, but I have been told by the county that they are ready and that they can handle the wastewater, and so I have to, I have to believe that's going to happen, so that when we start getting water to the homeowners and they start using it, that the wastewater system will hold up.
Thank you for that. And just an, an additional question that I hear is, it, it, it's my understanding that you will not turn on the water to someone's house unless an owner or a representative of the owner is present.
of the owner is present, is that correct? Is that how it will work?
So, I'll let Roger speak on what the process is. We have been getting a lot of emails and a lot of calls about canceling service, because, and obviously, we haven't billed anyone, I want to make that first and foremost, we have not billed anyone on this island for any services for water or stormwater. We have not sent out any bills, we're not collecting any money, we don't even have access to our system. But, we have had a lot of people just say, cancel our service, we're not ready, you know, we're not going to rebuild at this time, we want to wait, we don't want to be billed, which, once we get into our billing system, we'll note, you know, note those accounts, and we won't turn on their meter, because we don't want to turn on a meter, obviously, to anyone's house that doesn't have proper plumbing, because again, I don't want to flood anyone that's not, that's already been devastated. We do have a process in place, and we have had owners contact us and say, okay, we're ready for water, and as soon as I can get there, I will absolutely make sure that they have water.
Thank you, we had the question today, is it formally required to have a structural engineer's report filed, as well as an electrician report filed, before you can have water turned on to your property?
I'm going to let Roger address that.
So, well, this dovetails into, into some of the questions that were asked earlier, and maybe it's a good time to take a second and answer those. We have encouraged everybody to get a structural engineering report, so that some external entity, whether it be the Army Corps of Engineers or anyone else, says that their, that their house has to be torn down. So, we're asking people to do that, so that they have the very best opportunity for a structural engineer working for them to potentially save their house, because their engineering report that's signed and sealed by a Florida professional engineer will trump any windshield inspection by the Army Corps of Engineer or anybody else. And that's why we're encouraging people to do that, for two reasons. One is to perhaps save their structure, and B is, if they're going to be, be inside their structure, to be safe, to know that they're inside a safe structure. So, that's, that's part A. Part B is, we want to make sure that no one gets electrocuted by accident, and we want to make sure that any electrical deficiencies caused by the hurricane get addressed. And part of that is to make sure that they have an electrician sort of onboard before we turn on their water service, because obviously, water and electricity don't mix. We want to make sure that there's an electrician associated with their property when we turn on water, to make sure that, that if there's a broken pipe or something like that, no one gets electrocuted. So, that's, that's our current plan. We, you know, we, we think that's the safest approach, but if the council wants us to turn on water to people who does not have an electrician sort of onboard with their property yet, that's something we can discuss in a few minutes, and after we answer these questions, and decide if we want to do that.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, these are just factual questions, I'm just trying to get a sense of what our current policy is, I'm not advocating one or the other, just, just having you communicate what you know at this time, it's extremely helpful to folks.
Any more, any more questions for Kristi?
I've got a question for Kristi.
Yep.
Okay, now, I understand that with the water system, you can go at the meter, and you can turn off every individual property at the meter, right, to control where the water flow goes. There's no such, is there any, something like that with the sewer system, or is the sewer system just open?
No.
So, then all the houses along Astero, all the properties have been sheared off, do all those have to be managed before you're allowed to really start the sewer system? Because I'm just thinking, if someone's under, someone flushed the toilet up high?
Right, no, so, the sewer laterals on, or, and I'm not a sewer expert, obviously, because I'm water and stormwater, but every home has a sewer lateral. So, what happens is when you basically start flushing your toilets and using your showers, and that water goes into the sewer, then that's when it starts affecting the lift stations. So, as long as you don't have potable water, you shouldn't be affecting any of the lift stations at this point.
But I'm thinking when people get water, like you suggested before.
Right, it will be affecting the lifts, absolutely, it will be affecting sewer.
And there's uncapped sewer lines up and down, is this, is a sewage going to come out on those properties?
Potential, well, so, so, we're, we're very concerned about that, and of course, as we check a line on a particular street, and we get ready to provide water service to that particular street, one of the things we want to do is have Lee County Utilities there on site to be monitoring whether or not there's problems with their laterals on that particular street. So, I guess what I'm trying to say is, it's just not a matter of flipping a switch or turning the street on, turning the street on water-wise. We need to make sure that each property owner is ready to receive water at their property, and also have Lee County Utilities available to address any sewer problems that may result on that particular street as well. So, we could easily, we may be in a situation, we turn the water on, they say they have a sewer line break on that street, and they're going to ask us to turn the water off while they fix that sewer line break. So, it's, it's going to be a coordinated effort between ourselves and Lee County Utilities as we go street by street, and to deliver water, and as Kristi said, we want to be careful that, we don't, we don't, we know what the situation will be up to the meter, but we don't know what the situation is between the meter and faucet in each individual house, so we need to coordinate that with the property owners.
And I understand that, because that's why, you know, just getting power to someone's main, then the responsibility, the main shut off is, and then the responsibility becomes the homeowner to turn it on, but sewage is a different story.
Right, you know, and, and there are properties that, that do have sort of a main valve to their house, but that not every property has that, on the waterside. So, and, and I will tell you this, even in just pressurizing the main on Astero Boulevard, I've seen some water circ, accumulating around the sewer manhole cover, so, you know, I'm, I'm expecting that there will be some wastewater issues that are going to have to be dealt with.
Kristi, go ahead.
Do you have a question for Kristi?
Yeah, yeah, you know, same as Jason, I want to commend you and your, your team for what you've done, I've seen you since day one, and for those of you out there that may not know, I know personally, she's seen things that I've seen that no human should ever have to witness. So, the fact that they're out there going at it every single day, we need to give them a little bit of a break, a little bit of space, they're working as hard as they can. To my question, so thank you, Corey, to you and your team. You alluded to the plan, that there's a plan for the side streets, can you share with the residents what that plan is, where you plan on starting, how many streets per day you hope to, in best-case scenario? And working with the county as far as the sewer, are they abreast to this plan? And do they have staff available to assist us to, to speed this up?
So, we actually, Lee County Utilities and a few other utilities, Sand Bell and Matt LaChey Pine Island, Benita Springs had a meeting this morning, one of the first meetings we've had, and we discussed that, and we discussed the utilities getting back, you know, getting the water back on. So, basically, what we were going to do was, our, our plan is a little up in the air, like all plans are at this point, but we wanted to pick some of the streets that were the least damaged, that we knew that we could get down and get repaired if needed, or maybe there's no repairs needed. I am worried about services on the customer's side, more than I am about on my side, because I can shut down the water and fix that, I'm worried more about on the homeowner's side. So, we are, what we've been doing for the last week is, we've gone out, and I've sent my staff and multiple contractors out to shut off every meter on the island, and we are probably 80% there. So, we've shut off every meter, that way, when we do turn on water to the side street, which we plan on starting tomorrow, then we're going to immediately know if there's a break in the main, but we shouldn't flood anyone's property, because we've shut off all the meters. And any meter that's broken, we've taken a note of that, we've also locked them, because what I don't want to happen is for someone to turn on the meter while we're testing it. As soon as we've tested the main, tested the system down the road, make sure everything's intact, then we will go back behind, and anyone that's requested water, we will turn back on their meter.
Okay, so, what is the plan, maybe Roger, this is a better question for you, so, once you know that a side street is, is available to accept water, and now it can go to the home, for those homes that have their certifications in from the structural and the electrical, what is their process, and who should they contact to get on the waiting list for the water?
So, what will happen is, we have a pretty good database of our customer, water customers, at least we have, we typically have a phone number and last email, so, we'll be able to send them an email, so, look, we're, we're ready to supply water to your property, please get in touch with us. So, I'm pretty comfortable that, you know, we'll have a tagging system on the doors, we'll have email, we have phone numbers to reach out to those people, to let them know that their street is ready to receive water.
Okay, so, we'll reach out to them, they don't necessarily, once we know that the water's available to go to their home, we'll reach out to them?
Right, so, you know, we have a combination of the people who have applied to us for their, with their structural engineering and electrical engineering report, we're forwarding that information to FPNL, so they get their power turned on, and that information is also being shared with Utilities, so they know which are those properties, and then we know which street we're ready to deliver water on, and we can bring that information together, and bring water service to those people as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Corey. Okay, thank you very much, Kristi. I want to tell you all that Kristi Corey, in addition to being way more than capable, is also very approachable. So, she's all over the island, and if you happen to see her and you have a question, go over and give her a pat on the back and ask her a question, and she will answer your question, and you will get, you will get a straight answer. So, Kristi, we appreciate your work, we thank Miami Dade for all the contributions that they made. Roger, thank you for bringing them over here, and, and all the, all the great work that the, the town water has done. Thanks, Kristi.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's really important to know that, that, you know, when I, when I called Miami Dade Water and Sewer, and I said that, you know, we needed some additional assistance, they had someone come over literally the next day, review our needs, came back two days later with a team of, I think it's 18 or 20 people, to, and they've been here for 10 days, working with us and for us to help us make all the progress that we've made, and it's very appreciative. I had a colleague in Pinellas, we needed a pump from, who tracked down a pump for us, so, we've been reaching out to various other governments throughout the state to help us bring things on as quickly as we can.
Excellent. How about the next department head, Roger?
So, I know many people had questions about permitting, and I have Daphne Saunders come up and just give a quick update on what we're doing with, and Jason Green, and our building official, they're all here.
Hi, council, my name is Daphne Burcher Saunders, I am the Community Development Director for the Town of Fort Myers Beach. Under my purview is going to be code enforcement, beach and street enforcement, building department, planning and zoning, environmental, and what used to be short-term rentals, well, we still have short-term rentals. So, right now, I would like to say that we are processing the structural engineer reports that we are receiving, as well as the electrical inspection reports that we're receiving. There is a little bit of, it's a little time-consuming, because we are certainly validating the electrician, and, and make sure they're Florida-certified, as well as the checking the structural engineer stamps, but as soon as those are processed and they come in piecemeal, so, I think when we started this, and this, these started coming in, we had about 500-plus emails, and I pulled all of my staff that was able to come in and start processing these, including myself. So, we, you send yours in, so you're Joe Smith, and you live at 123 Astero, so you send in your structural, and then you send in, three days later, your electrical, and we're trying to respond to everybody, and let them know that we have received it, and we're processing this, because then what happens is, people, and understandably so, that people come and they say, did you get this? Could you check on this? What's the, you know, so, that email box, which is buildingpermits@fmbgov.com, which, by the way, is the email address that you should send all of your structural and electrical inspection reports to.
Daphne, can you repeat that a little slower?
Oh, sure, oh, absolutely. It is buildingpermits, all, all one, one thing, B-U-I-L-D-I-N-G-P-E-R-M-I-T-S@fmbgov.com. Not only are we, is that mailbox taking all of those, but all of the questions that are being asked about the, you know, I heard somebody say that there were 300 electrical permits in the queue waiting to be processed, that's, that's just not true. We are processing electrical permits, let's say if you have your, you got your structural, and let's say the electrician came out and said to you, you're not safe for re-energizing, you're going to have to get an electrician to pull whatever needs to be done for that re-energization. Then, then you have a trade, it's over-the-counter trade permit, so really, what they're doing is, then they have to go into the trade permit and just submit a regular application, and we are processing those as quickly as we can. So, go ahead, sure.
Can I just, so I don't forget it? So, say someone thinks that their home is ready to, to be ready for electric, they get the electrical contractor to come out, and they say, you need a new panel, or you need new breakers before you're able to repower, what is the process for the residents to be able to gain that permit, to be able to get that so they can receive the power?
You go onto the Building Services webpage, and right there, it'll say, it'll tell, explain to you, and if you go, if you look at the town website, and you scroll down to the bottom, and there's little sand dollars that go across the bottom, Building Services is the far-right sand dollar, I think it's blue, I think it's blue. So, you click onto that, and then up pops all the information, you know, regarding how, you know, your permitting, how you, you know, your contractor registration for Town of Fort Myers Beach. Our code says that you have to be a registered contractor in the Town of Fort Myers Beach. Right now, we're waiving that and letting that permit be issued conditionally, that at the end, when you go to get the final, you have to, if you're a contractor, now, always, always, always must be Florida-certified, must be a Florida licensed contractor, but if you have not registered with the Town of Fort Myers Beach, and let me explain how important that registration is, because when we get that registration, we're also validating your liability insurance, as well as your workers' comp insurance. So, if, if an electrician comes in and he's not registered with the Town of Fort Myers Beach, we don't know if he gets hurt on your property while he's there, if he even has workers' compensation. So, then you would, you could likely be sued for that. So, we make sure when they're registered, when the contractor is registered, that all of those insurances are active and, and in place, and, you know, current. So, but what we're doing is, used to be, what we would do, is you, before you even got your permit, you would have to be a Town of Fort Myers Beach registered permit. Now, we're letting that, we're issuing the permit to expedite the permits, we're issuing the permit, and then as a condition of the final, it's not going to be finalized until your contractor registers. Now, I'm going to tell you, this also benefits the contractor, because we also, if you go on that, that page, right up at the top, it's got all the contractors that are registered with the Town of Fort Myers Beach, so, that, that contractor now is on that list, that's updated every two or three days. So, you can look on that list and see all the contractors with their, with their contact information, and you can contact them, because, you know, we heard that there's not a lot of contractors that'll come to Town of Fort Myers Beach, we have hundreds of them that are registered, that, that do work on the town, in the Town of Fort Myers Beach. And if you go down, now, we didn't, we have not always required the structural engineers to register, but in the design professional portion of this, you can also see a few of the structural engineers. And I'm telling people, and I'm going to tell you this, from the day after the hurricane, now, you can ask, you know, Ed Ryan, Anita Saraceta, my personal phone number was given out for people to call me, and, and my email address, I'm going to give it to everybody right now, daphne, D-A-P-H-N-I-E-B@fmbgov.com. Now, I'm going to tell you, I'm a couple days out from answering this, but I will swear to all of you, I answer every email and I return every phone call. Now, I've, I've got a list this, this long, but I'm also processing these structural engineer and electrical engineer reports, so you can get your electrical turned on. So, we have a lot going on, of course, as you know this. As of today, I think we had about 80 houses and condo buildings, so there's more individual residents that have been powered, and today, we probably added another 25 or 30. So, we're, we're, we're all hands-on, so everybody can try to get their, their electric, or their electric put back on, even if you are, if you require a permit, we're trying to crank those out as well.
Is there anything that we can do to help you and the people that are coming in to help you speed up the process, whether it's having them notarized? Is there anything that we can do policy-wise to help you speed up your...
There's no, there's no, whoa, nothing has to be notarized right now, so, there's that. So, but I, I tell you, there's a lot of, we are all, all hands-on deck, we are all working, I've got, you know, my basin code officers in the house, typing out stuff, so we can get, you know, more and more of these, these electrical re-energizations done. So, right now, I mean, we do have, I think somebody mentioned this before, maybe it was the mayor or Roger, that we have additional staff coming. We do have, when the building permitting is open, and we know exactly what you guys want to do as far as new builds and things like that, we have, we have an incredible amount of backup in place, so we are going to, we're going to process those as quickly as we can. Now, we just have to remember that this is an environmentally critical area, the beaches, so there are a lot of rules and codes that you guys have put into place, and the council before you, that we have to have environmental review, zoning review, obviously, there has to be reviewed by the Florida Building Code, you know, so there is, there's a lot that goes on with issuing a permit. you know. So, there is, there's a lot that goes on with issuing a permit. And, you know, we do have a roof. I heard somebody say that somebody, they had a three-day roof, and that's true. A roof is an over-the-counter permit. So, you can get these, these, there's a list of permits that are trade permits that are over-the-counter. Electrical permit is over-the-counter, you know. But when it involves a remodel, then it's a remodel permit and the electric plan goes along with that. So, that's not a three-day permit.
So, just, just a question here. Yeah. So, you said over-the-counter, so people can come in and talk to you directly at the...
No. Everything is done online. Everything is done online.
People, please, you had your chance.
Hold on, please. Please, let's have a little order. If we don't have order, we're not going to have a meeting, I'm sorry to say. So, let's keep the order and let the speakers speak. Daphne, resume your conversation, please.
Our process, and this is the process of many municipalities, is everything is done online. We don't have, we don't even have scanners to be able to take your, once we get all these backup that we're talking about, they're in, they're not sitting here. They're on the East Coast. They're somewhere else. So, we have to scan, once that we receive that application and that plan, then we forward it over to the planners who are reviewing it for the Florida Building Code. We don't even have scanners. I don't have the ability to scan a permit and then send it over to our...
Excuse me, excuse me. Let me try to cut to the chase here. I think the question that everybody wants answered is, and frankly, I'm a little interested myself, when are the people actually, when we get staffed up, going to actually be able to come in, sit down and discuss their individual situation? Will we be able to get to that point?
Yes. I mean, you know, right now, we don't have that staff. I mean, but, you know, and a lot of times...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but this is a question that everybody seems to want answered, and I don't blame them. So, let's, I don't know if we can give them a ballpark, or if we can just...
Well, let's do this. Let us, we're going to be back here in a couple of days. Let us come up with a plan to set up, stand up a in-person permitting assistance-type
Kiosk.
kiosk slash operation, and let us work out the details of how we're going to, how we're going to get, stand that up, and we'll release that when we meet at our next meeting.
All right, that sounds pretty reasonable to me.
Or even, it seems like a good step would just be to have a place where people have power and internet, and they can do it online.
Well, there is a place right now. It's a Verizon tent. That has power and internet available there.
So, people can go to the Verizon tent, have power, have internet, and...
When we first got here, when we first got here after the hurricane, there was no internet anywhere. The only place we were able to get internet was at that Verizon tent. So, we sat there and got our internet.
All right, Daphne, does the, does the building official want to say anything, or the planner?
I think that Jason, you could ask him questions about the 50% rule, and I think that's the next important topic.
All right, let's get to that. Come on up.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on, hold on one second.
As the, as Mr. Green comes up, I want to make three observations with respect to what Daphne Missanders just said, for the members of the audience to reemphasize. One...
Can we have a little quiet, please? Daphne, Daphne, please, please. Let's have a little quiet. I'm sorry, quiet.
One, you know, the whole internet submission is, was, prior to Hurricane Ian, was an attempt on behalf of the town to modernize and make it easier for people to submit applications and go to an email and electronic system to reduce the amount of paperwork. And, you know, obviously, that becomes an impediment in a situation like this.
Yes.
Number two, the review that staff has to do, particularly the building official, is not us, it's not the town, it's the Florida Legislature. About 15 years and its infinite wisdom, adopted a statewide Florida Building Code that we don't have the ability to modify. We can't change it. We can't say, "No, we can't, you know, we're going to do it on an expedited basis." It has to follow the process that the Florida Legislature set for all municipalities in the state of Florida. We, as every other municipality, the 100 and some on in the 62 counties, all have to follow that Florida Building Code. And last but not least, with respect to the issue of licensed contractor, please, make sure your contractor is licensed. The way that the courts have dealt with this issue, this is not a town issue, this is a protection for you all, is that if you have a work done by an unlicensed contractor, and you then get into dispute with them because they didn't do the work, or, you know, God forbid, it was defective and there was damage to your home or someone in your, in your, in your house, the Florida courts have said, "We're not going to protect you because you went out and used an unlicensed contractor." That's not the town saying that. That's the courts of Florida saying, "That's a risk that you have assumed, and the way to protect yourself is to ensure, is to make sure that you use a licensed contractor." A Florida licensed contractor.
And I'm going to interject some news here, too, because I think it's timely, is that the...
Speak in, Bill.
The Lee County Building Industry Association is going to have an open house with builders who are, who build homes and are willing to work on Fort Myers Beach. That's going to be on November 3rd, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Cypress Lake High School. And I've understood there's already quite a few builders who have signed up for it. So, this is a chance to go, meet local builders, look at what plans they've done in the past, and shop for a local licensed contractor.
Okay.
November 3rd, 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. at Cypress Lake High School. And I'll be posting this on the FMB Rising Facebook page, if anybody has Facebook and wants to look for the information there.
Okay. Thank you.
Cypress Lake High School.
On Cypress, Cypress Lake Drive. Okay, Jason, Jason Green, ladies and gentlemen, our planner in the town, and Jason's going to explain, go into a little bit of in-depth about the 50% rule. Jason, take the floor, please.
Thanks. The 50% rule is a little bit challenging. There's some nuances to it, individual to each property, but basically, it is what it says, right? 50% of the value of the structure. That's an important thing to remember. It's not value of land or other items. It's value of the structure. It's, I believe, what I just saw a little bit earlier today, is the property appraiser has linked a letter, and I don't know if it's to every property, but there's a letter linked to most of your properties on their website that breaks down the values and shows the value of the structure based on this year. And I think it's as of January 1st of 2022. So, I think their intent there was to help you find that information on their website quicker. So, somebody else was showing me, I have not seen it myself, gone on the internet, but I believe that they're there for most of the properties. So, that should help the property, the Lee County Property Appraiser, lipa.org, and then you can search for your individual property, I believe by address or parcel ID. And I believe there's a banner or a link at the top of their page that announces this letter.
Jason, try to answer five questions that most of these folks in here, or typical people with concerns about the 50% rule would have. I mean, we've heard some today, but think in your mind, probably the five most common questions that people are going to ask about the 50% rule.
Well, I take the opportunity to say why the 50% rule is there. Part of it is, it's our agreement with essentially FEMA, for us to participate in the CRS program. And the CRS program, the community rating system, is how you get discounts on your insurance. And so, the town has worked really hard in the last few years to get a five rating. So, the lower the number, the closer to one, the higher your discount. Last year, we were able to earn that five rating because of all the hard work that we do of regulating and permitting and life safety. Remember, all of this is about life safety, as I think we've learned very quickly with this storm. So, the 50% rule is intended where if there's a substantial improvement, substantial damage to a structure, and it's 50% or greater, that you have to elevate essentially and build your structure to essentially today's standards, so that we avoid substantial investment into properties. It's really about insurance, ultimately, and life. So, that's why that rule's there. We do allow, under our code, the 50% of that number that the property appraiser has plus, I'm sorry, it's 50% of that number plus 20%. So, when you go to that structure value, it's that number plus 20%, divide that in half. That's your 50% number. And there's a lot, we can distribute, and I believe it's on our website, but there's a list of items that are not included in that, and it's mostly fixtures.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that 20% kicker, there's been a lot of questions about that. Explain a little bit, who authorizes that, how that works, and why that's implemented?
That's in our, that's in our code. That's in our flood ordinance, allowing that 20%. And part of that's to account for adjustment in market conditions.
So, can you give a real-life example of how that would work? Just a very simple example?
Sure. If you had a, if you had $100,000 structure value, then you would add 20%, that'd be $120,000. Half of that is $60,000. So, if you do $60,000 or more in improvements, it triggers, you have to build to today's standard.
The cost of repair is $60,000?
Your cost of repair.
$60,000 or more?
Correct.
In that case, you would have to elevate and build to the current code.
Correct. So, if it's that, if it's over that, then you have to elevate. So, that's why, right now, it's important to make some of those determinations, because we don't want you spending money and then not having to take advantage of that, right? We don't want you to spend money out of pocket and then find out you have to elevate. It's also our requirement by FEMA and our participation that we enforce that.
And this is, and to be clear, this is not suitability to live in the house. It's just about the elevation. So, if your house is already above the flood elevation, then the 50% rule does not apply to you.
Correct. Right. If you already meet the regulations as far as that, yes, correct. So, there's a lot of new structures that may have some damage. The 50% rule isn't necessarily applicable for the flood regulation purposes.
Right.
So, yes. So, the importance of this, obviously, like I said, is participation. We have to enforce this. We get scrutinized. We get audited every several years. It is a repetitive loss community. That means we have multiple structures that have requested insurance claims or made claims. So, FEMA scrutinizes us very thoroughly, and actually, it's every three years instead of every five years, is for most communities. So, it's very important that the community enforces these regulations. So, we want to work with you, but at the same time, we have to document and make sure that we do this correct.
You know, and, I know you don't want to hear this, but these are all listed, of course, on the website and all the other things online, but there are also, it's a small buffet table of all this stuff down at Town Hall, printed. So, if you want to come down and pick up a package of this, just let us know. You know, stop by, call Daphne or anything. If I'm there, I will personally bring these things out to you out on the street, or wherever you want to meet. So, it's available. I mean, it's voluminous to read. I took it home with me the other night and to bone up on the, on the 50% rule again, and all the accompany, accompanying backup. And it's, it's a lot to read, but it's available. It's available. So, if you have questions and you really want to dive into it, and the worksheets, there's worksheets that tell you, you know, with each, with each part of the house to repair and so forth and so. I mean, it goes on and on and on, but it's available. That's my, my point is, it's available, and please, please come down and get it.
So, it's important, I think you said, because it's important to say that there's a worksheet, there's documentation that your contractor has to fill out, that basically verifies what the cost is. We validate basically that cost, make sure somebody's not playing games with the numbers, but for most part, as long as it's within a reasonable, acceptable range, then that's fine. I do want to make one other point, since you mentioned the structural letters. I think there's some confusion on that. Whether you are or not get that structural engineer letter, that does not mean you're above or below the 50%. Those two things aren't necessarily related. You could be fined structurally, but still supersede the 50%, or vice versa. You could be not sufficient structurally, but once that's fixed, you're fine on the 50%. So, every property is going to be unique. Sometimes a roof triggers a 50%, sometimes it's an entire remodel. So, every property is going to be unique.
We'll make people's minds up as to how to proceed, knowing, knowing how those two interact.
All right. So, Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may just add...
Hold on one second.
Again, for those of you who are still here, much like I said with the Florida Building Code, my comment about the Florida Building Code, and as Mr. Green has said, while this is in our code, as is the Florida Building Code in reference to it, this is a requirement that has been imposed upon the town and every other local government throughout the United States that participates in the National Flood Insurance Program, which we are part of, by the federal government. We do not have the ability to modify it, change it, vary from it. It is the federal government coming to us and saying, "As a condition of being a participant in the National Flood Insurance Program, which benefits all of you through subsidized flood insurance, you must adhere to these regulations and you can't vary from them." So, again, we have very little room when we are applying these rules to each one of your given situations, which are unique to each one of you. We have to follow those regulations that have been imposed upon us by the federal government as it relates to this particular issue, the 50% rule.
And frankly, it's not a slap on the wrist, you know. It is, if we get in trouble with implementing these, it is, you get suspended from the program, and oh, by the way, you have to go to those homeowners and make them make the improvements after the fact.
And you lose your discount.
And you lose your discount, and we get suspended. So, it's a very serious thing as far as oversight.
Jason, any final questions for Jason, please?
Yeah, I have one question. Well, maybe it's a dovetail into another question, but I think people understand that part of it, very, very frankly. They've all read the same documents. They've all heard the same speech from all of us. They, I think they understand that part. I think where people really need answers is, one, who's making the final decision on if their home is 50/50 or not, because they're waiting. Do they want to start working on their home? Because right now, there's dots assigned to it, and some are orange, some are yellow, some are green. They want to know who's making that decision. How do they proceed? Who do they talk to about finding out, "Because my home has an orange dot on it, and I'm rated at that, I could be over 50 or under 50?" They just need information as to how to progress. I think they, they're well-versed enough now to understand what that means as far as property value goes and how you assess that.
Sure.
But who's making that assessment decision, and how is it being applied?
So, we do damage assessment, but it's not a specific fine number, because we don't, we're in there counting drywall panels, right? So, I don't know, the building official here, obviously, it's a, so the flood ordinances and the building codes are intertwined. And so, it's really important, I think, to understand that we work together on that. And so, like John said, there's building code issues, flood issues, they're all together. So, those dots, I don't believe, and Steve talked about, but I don't believe that they are a determination of 50% or not. But there is a process, like I said, if you're going to come in for a permit, you can have a contractor estimate the damage, or estimate the cost of improvements and fill that out, and we review that and make sure that it's within line of, consistent with market, basically.
So, I guess, just a scenario that I've received a lot, is I get my structural engineer and tells me my home is okay to be built. I get my electrical contractor to come in and says, "You need to fix this, this, or this to get your, to get your electrical contract." They go in and they get a permit. The town issues them a permit. Is there someone else that can come in after that and say, "No, wait a minute. You're over 50%. You have to elevate or rebuild"?
So, we would generally, as a town doing damage assessment, say, you, we looked at the structure. It looks pretty substantially damaged. If you're going to do an improvement, you need to get your contractor, a general contractor, to provide a price and spell it out in detail in the cost form and show what that cost is in comparison to your individual structure value.
So, the, essentially, the residents are required at the expense to provide that build-out list of what it would take to rebuild their home after...
It's part of the permitting process.
Yeah, it's part of the, so, what we're doing, what we do in FEMA and all those agencies do is, damage assessment is due in approximation, right? So, we're doing an estimate to kind of get a color code to it, so to speak. Again, those color codes aren't, what you're seeing aren't for this purpose, but when we do damage assessment, we're trying to do estimations of, we know the ones that are gone, right? We know the ones that are damaged and maybe borderline, and we can see ones that are, look pretty good. We don't know what's inside. Obviously, there could be some damage inside, but, so yes, it's up to the permitting process to determine that ultimately.
Okay.
Because in that permitting process is where they, where they will outline what they are planning to do, and that's where you do the calculation, 50%, right?
Yes, that's correct. By the way, Steve Popaski, new to this town. I actually got here two days before the storm, so happy to be here.
Steve, come in a little closer.
Sure. I came from Cape Coral, but I really, I've met several people so far and really enjoyed the time here so far. Looking forward to it. Just so you'd know, we've all been affected. I mean, my house flooded in Cape Coral, and we've been, you know, dealing with renovation and costs and so forth. Both my cars were totaled. So, I mean, we're all living through it, and we're going to get through it together. I just want to add that. As far as the permitting process goes, so the, your general contractor will fill out the cost form. It's on the website, in the forms section. And they will basically itemize, you know, like, I'll take, it will require 20 sheets of drywall at 15 sheet, $15 a sheet. And they will, they will break it out by cost. They will sign the form, and then we will review that. And so long as it's within reasonable, you know, market values, you can't say that, you know, I can do, I can get drywall for $3 a sheet, you know. That's not going to, that's not going to work. But as long as it's within that reasonable range, for example, like $12 to $18 a sheet, then that'll be accepted. And then, that'll be compared to the valuation that Jason explained pretty well. And as long as you're less than 50%, then you don't need to bring your whole house up to the current codes. And, you know, like you said, one of the current codes is that... And, you know, like you said, one of the current codes is that you have to be at a certain elevation for your first floor. If you have to elevate, it's possible to elevate an old, an old building. It is fairly expensive, so you have to, at that point, you would have to kind of consider financially, is it worth it, you know, to knock it down and rebuild something totally different? Do I want to do that? Do I want, if I'm on a slab now, do I want to go up and have parking underneath? There's a lot of, a lot of choices you have to make, and we can obviously help you with some of those questions, for sure.
I would also think that, you know, because I know, having gone through this 10 years ago when we remodeled our house, is that it's also important to take a light touch. So if you're worried about the 50% rule and you have a bathroom that's out, it's not the opportunity to do the other bathroom. Let's keep it as minimal as possible to make sure you're under the 50%.
Right. So the cost to just have, to bring it back to its pre-damaged condition. So the valuation that we use is the damage, the evaluation it was just before the storm, when it was undamaged, that's the valuation you use. If you, if you, if you use the assessed value plus 20%, and you don't agree with that figure, there is one other option. The second option of two is that you can get a private market, a certified appraiser to actually value your house just before the storm. You can use that value, or you can use the lepa.org, you know, plus 20% value and use that to calculate your 50%.
How does the 50/50 rule per permit come into play in the overall scheme of, of the 50% FEMA in this scenario?
Yeah, we were talking about that earlier because it's important to understand that you can't remodel half the roof and then the other half, right? I mean, there's certain things, it has to be a livable home. We've had situations where maybe somebody left a concrete slab floor instead of redoing their wood floors. That's, I think what you're talking about is the occurrence by occurrence permit, permit by permit.
Yes.
But it cannot be, I'll do the windows later, I'll put the door on later. It's got to be a habitable home, so it can't, we're prohibited from doing a phasing approach to get around and circumvent that rule. It has to be a legitimate construction and remodel that makes it habitable.
I think, I think what Jason's trying to say, Counselor, is he's going to, Counselor Veach's point. So you have a damaged bathroom, you have to fix that, but you have another bathroom saying, well, while I'm having the contractor here, should I renovate that bathroom? Works fine, but I just want to make it match the new one I'm putting in? Well, if you're not careful, that could put you over the 50% rule, so maybe you want to wait to renovate that bathroom, to make sure you state that, so that you don't put yourself in a situation where you're over by renovating something that doesn't have to be fixed right then and there to make a whole house. What's the time limit?
It's occurrence by occurrence right now.
So as you close the permit for the first one, you could reopen the permit to renovate. Is that correct, Jason?
I believe that's how.
Get a new permit to renovate.
Correct.
Right. So you close your first permit to bring your house, to complete your house, and then you can come back and pull a second permit to renovate that second.
But I want to piggyback on your comment. I have to take the opportunity, as a certified floodplain manager, we're taught to try to educate the public of making those decisions that you were talking about. So raising it and being safer, I think if we learned is probably better. So when you're those borderline ones, we really encourage you to think hard about the costs. And with a new flood insurance, anybody that's got insurance has to pay attention to what the new flood insurance is going to do. So if you are maintaining a home below flood, you're probably going to see those numbers skyrocket on a year-to-year basis. So just keep that in mind. That's insurance, not us, nothing to do with us. But it's because it's a, what they call a pre-firm structure, we're seeing $5,000, $6,000, $10,000 a year for insurance.
So if you lift, you'll get a, you should get a discount on your flood insurance, being above the floodline, which will save you money in the long run.
Oh, yeah, thousands and thousands of dollars a year, yes.
And another, another point, too, is that right now, our, the interpretation we have for 50% rule is fairly permissive because 10 years ago was every five years. Now you can close out a permit, get it done, and then start a new permit and get the clock ticking. And I'm not sure, is that, is that something you think FEMA is going to allow us to continue?
So, I don't want to bring up too many issues, but we have.
We don't want to put on the record.
No, let me, let me put it this way. It benefits the town to go below 50% because we benefit in points when it comes to the CRI, CRS test, right? So we got to accumulate all these points to get that nine, eight, seven, six, five number lower. What is lower? Lower is 49%. So there's things that we can do in the future to benefit us, but their, their minimum is 50%.
Right.
It benefits us to evaluate what that other number might be.
So if you do lift your house to flood, then you'll get a discount on your insurance and everyone else will also benefit.
Yeah, plus it, plus it reduces the scrutiny on future permits if those base flood elevations stay the same, yeah.
So let's just be clear.
I've got to jump in here. I see people carrying on full-blown conversations in the background all around this room, and when you do that, other people cannot hear. If you need to talk, you need to leave the room so that the people that are here for information can get it. Please be courteous.
Okay, gentlemen. Yeah, no, we're going to, Amy, we're going to have those answers to those questions, but we have to get.
It doesn't apply to me, my house is in debt, but I have people reaching out to me asking how it doesn't apply.
Okay.
It's the valuation just before the storm, so the day just before.
Can you repeat the question?
No, 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 no. Come on. We got to bring this back in. There's going to be a lot of questions. I understand, I understand everybody has questions. That's what these gentlemen are here for, and they're going to, they're going to direct, they're going to be able to direct you the same way I directed you to Daphne down at the Town Hall. If you have questions, you can submit the questions. I told you at the beginning of this meeting that every, every speaker that spoke and had a question, the clerk has recorded these and they will be answered. So we're going to answer all these questions, but, but we have to get through this, through this today here.
So, well, I think, I think it's just to be clear. So you download this letter, you download, you can download this letter from LEPA, look at the value, add 20%, get an estimate to repair, to repair your house, and if it's above that number, once you divide that number in half, you know you have a 50% rule issue that needs to be addressed. And if it's below that number, you know you don't. It's mathematics, but if someone needs help with that, as I said, by our next meeting, we will tell you where, where and when we'll have our kiosk up, and someone will be there to, to help you walk through that process.
Jason, one last quick question, if you may.
Please, everything, yes.
Some people have asked if they don't agree with the value that's been assessed to their property and they want to appeal it. Can you tell them where they can go to appeal it or how to appeal it?
Which one? The property appraiser's value?
Yes.
You would have to call the property appraiser. I was just showing one today. That's, that's between you and them, the property appraiser.
Okay.
We don't have any role in that, that number.
But Counselor, Counselor, so Steve mentioned this earlier. If you don't agree with that value, one of the things you could do is get someone else to calculate that. Will you repeat that, Steve?
Correct. So there's two options. The first one's the LEPA valuation, plus 20%. Now, just the structure, not the land, remember that. And then you divide that by two, you get, that's 50%, and that's your budget for, to fix up to the pre-damaged value. The second option, if you don't agree with that figure, is to get a private appraiser done by certified Florida licensed appraiser and give you a valuation of your structure just before the storm, before it's, before it's been damaged, what it would, what it was worth. And then you can use either one of those, it's your choice to calculate 50%.
Yeah, I mean, that's obviously up to the appraiser to take that on, right? I mean, that's, they got to have pictures, they got to, whatever their process is, they have to be able to certify that. They have a whole bunch of state regulations that they have to follow by too, but that's an option.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Okay, Roger, who's the next department head? Was there anyone else?
Well, we have, we have our finance director here, manager here. I don't know that there were any specific questions about that, but if not.
Roger, just on infrastructure issues, I know FPL is not here, but you get briefed on a regular basis. Can you give people just a rough idea of where FPL is and the process on the side streets and how that, how that is going?
Yes. So, to my knowledge, FPL is ready to power in, within two days, any property that provides a town with a structural analysis on their property, that it's safe, and electrical inspection report so that we can be certain that the damage that was caused by the hurricane has been identified and gets addressed when the permit is pulled for electrical repairs. Many of you probably know that, that saltwater and electricity and, or water, when we turn on the water, those things don't mix very well and create tremendous fire hazards or potential for electrocutions. And that's why we've put this process in place to make sure that everyone stays safe. With regard to the numbers of people who've been hooked up, I believe, Daphne said earlier, there was 80 people so far, and I think there's 20 in the queue, if I heard her correctly.
It's 100 now. 100 has been energized.
100 properties been energized, and of course, we're going as quickly as we receive the structural electrical.
Is there any symmetry? In other words, are they going south to north, north to south?
They're going as they come in, so they have crews available to, to address those. And my understanding from talking to our FPL representative on site, they're, right today, based on the way they're coming in, they're not anticipating more than a two-day delay in hooking somebody up.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so there's, there's one other, one other directive that's here, and I think most of you know, I think most of you know Allison Geeson. She is our Parks and Cultural Director, so besides developing long-range plans to bring Bay Oaks and Mount House and Newton Property back to their useful pre-storm benefits to the community, we've recently tasked her to take over our, our community service, human service needs, to make sure that we have adequate resources at four locations throughout the island for showers, laundry, water, emergency food, and hopefully a cellular on wheels setup. She's working with the incident command folks we have from the New York City Fire Department to get those resources on the ground. There was a location, it's sort of around the Town Hall complex that we're moving to the Beach Baptist Church, but we wanted Santini, and there's two others, and if we need more, we'll grow it out from there. So I've tasked Allison and her staff to staff those and manage those and coordinate with the New York City Fire Department.
Roger, could you, do you have any clarification as to when that would arrive at Santini Plaza and what services would then be provided at that point?
So our goal is to have the same services at all of them, restrooms, showers, laundry, water, emergency food, and if we can keep them staffed with ice concerning the weather, we will.
Question as to when that would occur at Santini Plaza? Just curious if you have an estimated time?
I do, I do not. I will have one when, next time we get together, but we're going to push, if we can get it ready tomorrow, it'll be tomorrow.
Thank you.
But that's, you know, we're just pushing as hard as we can to get that set up at those four locations.
Mr. Mayor, if I, I just had a real quick question, go back to the finance part of it. Roger, maybe you can help share the plan as to, you know, there's concern out there that the town can't afford this, the town is going to go out of business, you know. Can you share, if you can, what the plan is to, to keep the town going forward? I know I've spoken to several other officials that have been in different areas, that have been through this, of what they've done to get their towns through it. Can you share with us what that plan is?
Yes. So, for those, for those of you who may not have gone through a category four slash five storm like I have in a couple of different places where I've worked, the biggest financial expense we have is associated with debris. So because of that, the, what I did, I recommended to the mayor when he and I were here on the ground literally the day after the storm, and I think I talked to several of you privately about that, was to see if we can get the Army Corps of Engineers to take over our debris management. We sent that request in, and, and when it hit the state, the state responded by saying that, well, rather than have the corps come in, we will work with Lee County and take over that for you. The reason that's so important is because the debris of this storm of this magnitude could be tens of millions of dollars, potentially $100 million, and depending on when FEMA turns off the 100% cost sharing of that, we potentially could be responsible for, for 12 and a half percent. But because we made this arrangement with Lee County, we would not be. So that is the biggest, would have been the biggest financial risk to the town, and we made sure that we would not have to be in a position to foot that bill. The next.
Because in talking with, was it the Panama City Mayor, he was saying that they ended up paying for a portion of their debris, and they had to take out loans to do that until FEMA paid. And while those loans were ascending, they really couldn't do a lot of work because their credit was fully extended. So this is a very important way to protect the finances and allow us to get our recovery underway faster.
Okay. The other, the other thing just to remember about really.
And the county, excuse me, just, just to piggyback on that, and the county took out a $60 million line of credit just because of that, because of those, those fees that may, they may incur upfront and have to pay, and others. I'm sorry, Roger.
No, no, it's, it's fine. So one of the things that, that many people may not understand about how FEMA works is, is that they, they have, like the IRS, after you close your last project with them, seven years to claw back any money that they felt that you spent that did not fully meet FEMA rules. So I could tell you, in, in the, in the case of Hurricane Andrew, the FEMA clawback to Miami-Dade County was $51 million. And frankly, I was, I was assigned to, to try to resolve that issue on behalf of Miami-Dade County, and I was able to get all $51 million back, but it took a tremendous amount of work documentation or whatever to prove that all those, those things were valid, and it took about three years. So they have, they have an opportunity to claw back if they feel like anything was done that doesn't 100% follow their rules, and it could be very devastating to, to any community, particularly a community of our size. So we have to be extremely careful with that. But by, by segmenting out this debris management issue, we have put ourselves in a very, very good position to not have the highest-risk activity subject to that review and scrutiny. Plus, we're not at this point being asked to pay any match. So those are very, very important financial considerations for the town. The second thing we did is, we asked, as you may know, we had, we had plans to build a new community center at Bay Oaks. We had, we already had a loan in place for that. We have asked the bank to allow us to use that money to rebuild the city hall or town hall versus the original project at, at Bay Oaks, and we believe that they will, they will allow us to do that.
Don't you have insurance?
Then in exit, we have insurance, but, you know, the insurance would not, I believe, pay for a building in today's dollars. Plus, we have other things that we need to do that, so we're trying to make our, we're trying to use the money where we could use it and take some of the insurance money and use it other places, so we're trying to work all those angles out. But we do have insurance, and we're processing with our insurance claim for our insured properties. The next thing we've done is we reached out to the Towns Bank, and we've asked them to establish a line of credit, and we're going through, they're going through our financials now, and I suspect that will be northwards of $5 million if we need a line of credit. And again, that's just because we have to lay out money, then submit it to FEMA, then get reimbursed, and that could take a while. So basically, it's a float. The, the next thing we could, we're, we're planning on doing is, there's a severely damaged grant, not grant, a loan from, that's available from FEMA of generally of $5 million, and we will apply and we will receive that. And usually, in a small community like ours, with proper documentation and, and making our case, those loans typically can be forgiven after five years. So collectively, besides our cash at hand, which is roughly $15, $16 million, plus the eight from, from the loan, plus potentially another seven from a line of credit, plus the five that we're getting, we should get from FEMA for, for the community damage grant, disaster grant, we should have more than enough money to, to see us through this, again, providing that we, we follow all the regulations and we're smart in our approach of what we use. that we follow all the regulations and we're smart in our approach of what we use our money on, and make sure that it's compliant, and if it's not compliant, that we use an external funding source that doesn't, that's not subject to those regulations, such as our insurance money, for something else we want to do that does not fully meet the FEMA regulations.
Okay. Thank you very much for that. We're going to keep moving here, and the next item is, it's a little bit different, but in a different spot, but it's final public comment.
On the public comment, because this is a fairly broad thing, I have a couple of suggestions and things that I've heard from other people that I'd like for us to consider.
Would you bring those up under your reports at the end?
Oh, sure.
Okay, thank you. So same rules, three minutes if anyone would like to speak. Okay, yes, yes, ma'am, in the back.
Amy.
Amy. And Madam Clerk, you'll keep the time, and also, any questions, you'll document.
I won't go that long. Amy Lowery, 5137 Astera Boulevard. First off, what I was trying to get answers from Jason for, and people calling us, I want to thank you all for everything you're doing. These are unprecedented times, we said that during COVID, and now we're under a new, new normal again. Our house is condemned, there's no way to salvage it, and also, we'll go up and rebuild, and we're looking forward to being back on the island again. But a lot of questions have come up when that LEPA letter came out yesterday, and I'll give you an example. My letter for my house said that my building value was $960,000. So I got a call from a lady who's on my Facebook page that I've never met, lives on Madera, and she started following me back in Irma, and she says, have you seen the letter? And I said, yes. She says, well, I emailed Christian Schumacher and asked, how do I figure this out? And Christian emailed her back and told her that that's not the number you used that's on the letter they gave us. So I emailed Christian myself, and I said, how does this work? Can you explain it to me? So she replied back today. The value that she highlighted, that again is on LEPA, but not on that letter that you click on that special yellow bar, you know, and get that letter, is $304,000 for my house. So instead, I take $304,000, multiply it by 20%, divided by 2. Big difference from $960,000 times 20% divided by 2. So based on that, everybody's asking, what can they do?
Okay, so let me answer that, because I think it's a very important question.
Okay.
All right, so both of those numbers are coming from Lee County Property Preiser. We will confirm that the letter is the most current information, and that we could use that number. And/or we will ask them if they can confirm to us that if there's a difference between the two numbers, that we could use the larger of the two, and we will do that tomorrow.
Okay, all right, that's the biggest concern that's on people's minds.
We want that number to be as high as we could possibly get.
Right, because that 50% is pretty critical for so many people, and they're going to be, like you all have said already, on the border for so many places.
We will reach out to the property.
When I looked at mine, and it was like a $600,000 difference, I'm like, whoa, that's going to affect a lot of people in a huge way, so, okay.
Thank you, thank you for pointing it out. We'll get that clarified.
That was the only question I had, so, and again, thank you guys, and I'm really sorry for everybody's losses. I know you all have suffered just as much as we have.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am.
Okay, Kathy Koba, 5 pound view. As far as the debris goes, I happen to be one of the lucky ones who had my garbage picked up three times already, and the reason being is I live at the second house on the block. So when the truck makes the turn, he can get my, those big trucks can get my garbage, he can't, or the debris, can't go down the street because of all the other trucks that are there. So that's a thought that, you know.
That's a problem.
It is a problem.
When the big trucks come by, if the right-of-way is blocked, they'll pass over, you know, and so that's why it's imperative that people, and I know it's hard, it's hard to keep everybody off the road, but it's imperative that they do, otherwise, they will move on.
Right, but I'm thinking, in my mind, I'm thinking that there's some way that on a particular day, you park on the right side, everybody, you know, the trucks, the workers' trucks park on the right side, so at least they can get, there's got to be some way to get around this.
Like New York City.
She's at the end of the block, and I don't know if her stuff has been picked up. I just got a text, okay, I got a text mail today, it was the third time they picked it up.
So can I address that? We will talk to Waste Management, who is our waste service via Lee County, and work something out to make sure that their drivers are not just taking advantage of the situation, well, there's someone blocking off the street, because their drivers, when they get done with their route, they go home. So, you know, so.
Well, and that was another.
So we'll look into that.
Yeah, I mean, that was another thing I have down here, is the time in which they're doing this, you know, can some of this stuff be picked up after 7:00? You know, these are issues, these are things to think about. Going back to the 50% rule, so if somebody gets their house all put together, drywalled, and they decide not to paint the inside, that's okay. No?
I think that.
Or the owner says, I'm going to paint it myself.
If the owner says he is going to paint it itself, that's fine. I don't believe, if I remember correctly, that painting is included in the calculation.
Okay.
And so. It's complicated, and like any federal regulation, it's, you know, it is complicated, but there is a really good desk reference, it's called substantial improvement or substantial damage desk reference. It's online, we have a link on it several places on our website as well, and I know that a lot of people don't have online, which is why I think.
Lots of people have time.
All right, let's move this along.
But there is, basically, most things are included, the only things, there's some things that are not included, like, you know, plug-in appliances, and, but all your labor and materials, more or less, are included, including your own labor, you have to assign sort of a market value to it.
Okay, going along with that, a question came up on our block. We have had contractors in there cleaning it out and knocking down the drywall because it's all moldy. Let's say that costs $15,000, is that part of the 50% in the 50% rule?
Yes, so anything to return it to its original pre-damaged value. So it's okay to pull out that moldy drywall from a health standpoint, we're not going to make you get a permit to just get that place healthier for you, but you will have to include that in your cost form later on, like, you know, we removed this norris sheet of drywall at this value, and the labor and so forth.
Okay, so those people who have gotten cheaper people to pull out their drywall are in better shape than those of us who hired people who are, you know, professional mediators, and we feel are doing it properly, so it's a detriment for us than.
Kathy, Kathy, I'm going to have to stop you here.
I'm just trying.
I know, and I want, no, I understand, and I want you to submit the balance of your questions to the clerk. And that was it? Okay, thank you. Next, ma'am. I'm sorry, Rick, I didn't see you coming up, I'm sorry.
Hi, my name is Nina Bearcar, I live on 105.
Come in a little closer.
Can you hear me? Matanza Street. So my house is completely gone, and I understand all the rules with the 50%. My question is, I do have some businesses on the island, is the 50% rule the same for commercial as it is for residential?
Yes.
Yes, okay, and is the process that we're talking about with getting electric on water, all those things, the same as residential?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think one thing that's an important difference is debris removal, that it's a separate thing to get FEMA to pay for commercial as opposed to residential, right, Roger?
Yeah, so we've asked FEMA for a blanket approval for oral, single-family, and duplex homes, because we could do that as blanket for the town, but commercial properties are property by property.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Rick.
As I was speaking before about contractors who are coming.
Rick, identify yourself.
Rick Lowery, sorry. As I was speaking before about contractors who are coming to rebuild our island, I've heard several issues that have popped up here. Number one is, you have to be licensed in Fort Myers Beach. How many builders?
No, it's not, it's, I don't know if you misheard it or something.
I did, because the way I understood, that all builders had to be licensed in Fort Myers Beach.
We, that's, the answer is, Steve, come up and explain it, it's not licensed in Fort Myers Beach. We don't license anybody, I can tell you that.
Okay, because we understood that some of them had to be licensed in Fort Myers Beach, which is a lot different, a lot tougher to find people, so.
Yep, I'm happy to help you. Okay, so, right, step to the mic. You're talking about hiring someone to fix up your house?
Yes.
Yeah, so they have to be licensed in the state of Florida, the Florida Department of Business and Professional Regulation, DVPR, they license people on a state level. We don't license anybody, the state takes that completely by themselves. We're talking about, maybe registration is maybe the confusion. When you pull a permit in the town of Fort Myers Beach, you need to be registered with the town of Fort Myers Beach, that's, maybe that's the confusion.
On the town list, on the town's list.
Correct, and that's already created issues in the past, and that's why I'm saying bringing that up, because you have to be registered in Fort Myers Beach, a lot of these builders are not registered in Fort Myers.
The Vice Mayor, it's been waived, the Vice Mayor said it, and the other attorney said it, so.
Yeah, I listened.
Okay, it's been waived.
Okay. The other question I had, and we've been slowly bringing up building issues, is you're making a contractor who is building a home list every single item on a list, and they mentioned it earlier, even drywall, the sheets of drywall you use, the price you use. Can you imagine building your home and trying to itemize every single nut and bolt that went into that home for the contractor? A general price is a lot easier, coming up with a list, and I know these guys are strict.
That's not for new construction, that's only for a home that's below flood that you're repairing.
A lot of these are, and that's my point, when you come up with this 50% list, number one, right now, the people that are mucking out homes are making some $90 an hour, you're going to count that against your 50%, which is already hurting them, okay? The labor costs that are going to cost us the next five years are going to be astronomical. The products that we pay for, drywall, sheeting, is going to be astronomical because of the amount of damage that's been done in our area. The prices are going to triple, if not quadruple. So when you take that 50% rule, and you're taking people's labor, you're taking every item that's been jacked up price-wise, I just had to pay $15,000 for a vehicle extra because they jacked up the price. Can you imagine what it's going to cost for a sheet of drywall next week? So this 50% rule is going to knock a lot of people out of that market of being able to rebuild, because you're including so many things that are going to be jacked up, labor and cost.
Sir, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with anyone, because that's the marketplace. What I'm saying, and what the town is saying, is that that's not the town's decision, that is the federal government that said we have to do it that way.
It's the town's decision on how you itemize things, your decision.
No, sir. No, sir. There's a schedule of values, as the building official testified, or stated earlier, that can be filled out, and it has to conform to the FEMA requirements.
And you're going to look at, and even mention, I'm going to look at the sheets of drywall and see what you paid for them, to see if it's an even price.
Because if not, it'll be rejected.
So if we go up to New York and buy drywall at $3, you're going to reject it because here it's 15?
Sure, if we're going to have a conversation.
I'm having a conversation with you that's real right now.
So if we fudge the numbers to benefit the residents of Fort Myers Beach, that is a short-term solution, because what will end up happening is FEMA will then come back, audit those numbers a year, two, five years from now, and say, you didn't do this right, we're taking away your flood insurance participation in the NFIP.
I disagree with you in what you're doing, I disagree with you that every nut and bolt has to be counted, and I disagree with you at the amount of cost that it's going to take these people to build back their homes at 50% when the price has tripped.
I understand.
Rick, all right, thank you. Yes, sir.
I understand.
Please identify yourself.
Pardon me? I'm John Cameron.
Thank you, John.
5157 Astera, which is destroyed, but I also have another one, so I'm lucky. I understand the whole part where you have to go by the Florida State Building Code. That I get. What I don't understand is why you're not waiving all of the extra rules and regulations that you have imposed as a town on everybody during this catastrophe. That would drop the price that, because all of that gets included in the cost, when these contractors making out their stuff, they say, well, we got to do this, we got to do this, we got to do this, which is not required by the state. You guys require that, and you guys could waive it on an emergency basis, should you feel like doing it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? John.
Mike, welcome. 15 pound. 50, 50. So I kind of asked this question earlier, and since I've learned more, I'd like to bounce back, just so I don't throw good money after bad. I've got an electrical contractor already lined up to come in, basically put external power around the house, I don't want to put power inside of it, I'm going to rewire the whole thing, it's had seven feet of saltwater in it. But I want to get, I want to repower my docks, my pool, and the, an outlet for the motorhome, and, you know, receptacles to work with, you know, to build back. This guy says, you guys, you know, he can come in and do all that work without getting a pre-approved permit, and that you guys have waived that, is that correct? I don't want to give this guy a deposit, and he's a local contractor, he's right out of Benita, had several trucks out in the neighborhood doing some of the inspections. Is that true? And then he submits the permit?
I think the best thing I could tell you is to take advantage of the fact that the building officials over there, and have a quick cyborg conversation with them, because I don't think that that sounds correct, but he's here, why don't you just step in the back room and.
Sure, I guess the only other thing about, you know, granted, the building materials are up and everything, this is a catastrophic event. Has anybody thought about trying to put together something with either Governor DeSantis or some of the large suppliers, and say, hey, can we work a deal for a discount for, you know, on building materials to be shipped in to rebuild this town?
I'd be happy to.
Whether it's Home Depot.
I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to do that. Okay, thank you.
And I also think there's opportunity to work with your neighbors, because if you're doing some big operation, and like with my street, there's four houses left, and so there's opportunity to get somebody to do multiple houses and maybe get a discount on it.
Anyone else? Okay, see, doctor, come up to the microphone, doctor, please.
Dr. John Albert, 19 pound. Just, since you're putting out, it seems like a lot of what's going on in the neighborhoods is whispering down the lane. You know, one neighbor will say to the next neighbor, well, I used this contractor, try him, don't use this one, use that one, be sure not him, definitely them. And you're talking about having required, or having requirements of the contractors. I heard Daphne say they had something, a drop-down menu that had some of the contractors. If you have a website, wouldn't it be good if, beneficial for all the residents, if you need an electrical inspector and you need a structural inspector, to have those people listed, and the approximate, and have them register the approximate fees they're going to charge for those? Because I heard a spectrum from $500 to over $2,000. I mean, it's the Wild West out there. Wouldn't it be great to put on the website, these are our contractors, here's their phone numbers, this is what you could expect?
Yeah, I think, Doc, unfortunately, we can't point anybody to contractor A versus contractor B, we can provide.
They register with you, am I correct?
They register with us.
These are the people who are registered with Fort Myers Beach.
But we can't, we can't get into their pricing, if that's your question.
Okay, well, at least we know who to contact, some of these people are.
We're providing that information, and obviously.
You know what, if you're looking for an engineer, talk to me after the meeting. I got a friend of mine on the beach.
Here you go, whispering down the lane.
Sounds a lot like Fort Myers Beach, doesn't it?
I got an engineer, just fell off the truck, you know what I mean?
No, no, well, that's not the case, but I'd be happy to help you out with that.
And I haven't seen structural engineers on Yelp.
Yeah, okay, Jennifer?
This is Quick. I, in my neighborhood.
Hold the mic down to your.
Jennifer Rusk. In my neighborhood, I've been hearing people talk about their vacation homes, that they're sending their contractors and electricians from the states that they're from down to do work, and bringing supplies like panels and electrical stuff. And I had one friend who said, I kind of want to get in on this, because it seems like it might be a little bit less expensive for the panels and some other things. And I told her I would advise her not to, but I guess as a question that maybe is for permitting, is an electrical contractor allowed to come from another state to come down to do the work?
The answer is no.
If they're licensed in the state.
As long as you're licensed in Florida.
No, but in a different.
No, you have to be licensed in Florida. Matter of fact, that's a very common problem in Florida after these hurricanes and storms, is that people come in from other states, they're not licensed in Florida, they're thereby doing unlicensed contracting, which is a. They're, they're thereby doing unlicensed contracting, which is a third-degree felony when there is a state of emergency, like it has been declared by the governor. So it's actually very serious, and DVPR is actively walking around the community and responding to reports, anything that we, we hear, and they're actually looking to prosecute those individuals.
So your advice is good advice, you're, you're able not to do that.
Okay, thank you.
In case, that's worth repeating, it's a third-degree felony, third degree. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Rachel Rose Danzy, 6151 Astero. To your point, you said that the biggest expense is the debris removal in the process?
It's the largest risk, yes.
And I know that at first FEMA said 30 days, and they extended it to 60, is that right?
That's what the FEMA did, yes.
Okay, so we're, you know, three and a half weeks into it, and I, I personally sat there and watched a truck at, at our nine-unit property come back and forth for three loads, so three truckloads for literally 5,000 square feet worth of furniture. So do you think that, and I think you mentioned there's 20 trucks that are on the road every day.
That's what they reported to us.
So just us working together, knowing that that's the biggest expense, you know, and it sounds like it, the county is taking over, so it's not affecting their pocket necessarily?
Well, it will if, if-
It will.
Deadline is not extended, and so, we know, we know that there'll be debris to be picked up after 60 days. And we know that there will be a point in time when potentially that, that cost-sharing formula will shift from 100% being paid by the federal government and state to potentially being a local share. Where our, our hope is, and we're working with Lee County to extend that 60 days to a longer period of time, what FEMA typically does is they'll say, "Well, we're going to go from 60 days to 180 days, because we know you'll procrastinate." They usually add it in 30-day increments based on their belief of how much progress you're making. So the information that Jason Freeman related earlier with regards to how many cubic yards are being picked up, that's being forwarded via the county to the state and FEMA, so they can judge when they should extend and if they're going to extend. Of course, we're going to try to do everything we can to encourage them to continue to extend that deadline.
Okay. I was just trying to keep the, keep it within the budget to where we're not having to come out of pocket, you know?
Yeah, that, that was my number-one priority when I woke up Thursday morning after the storm.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry for all your losses as well.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Okay, anyone else, we'll move on. Okay, we'll move on. The next item is the town manager's items. Mr. Town Manager?
Well, if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I'm going to let the council go ahead of me today, and if there's something that you all missed, I know some of you expressed some ideas and concerns that you want to raise, so I'm going to let you guys go, and if, if you miss something, I feel it's important. Chip in at the end.
That sounds good, that sounds good to me. Next item is town attorney. You want to do the same, or except to take-
There's one item though, right?
Take care of that one item?
There's, yeah.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor.
Yep.
To what the manager said, said to the last speaker, because there's a lot of comments, I want to emphasize that, you know, the long view of the manager, my communications with him and with representatives from the state, was to allow the state to come in and take over, so the risk associated with the cleanup cost was minimized to the taxpayers and the residents of Fort Myers Beach. But in that transfer, there, we acknowledge that while they're our partners, there is a, you know, some level of control that they are exercising to the comments of the members of the public, particularly at the beginning of the meeting, about, you know, "Why aren't the trucks here? Why aren't the trucks there?" That's the give and take of, that happens on a day-to-day basis in, in that situation where we're in partnership as opposed to exclusively in control. But the long view is to save the town those expenses, because they're going to be covered either by, by FEMA reimbursement or by the state, because they're the ones who've taken control of that function. As far as my particular item, this actually was taking place prior to the hurricane Ian hitting the, the town. We were negotiating with a particular property owner, the family, the 190 Tarpon, that we had some code enforcement liens, where the amount of the, the town's lien was close to, I think, around $200,000. The property sold at a foreclosure sale. There was excess money, and so we've negotiated where the, a portion of those excess funds, as agreed with the property owners, is coming to the town for the release of the lien, and it's $125,000 plus or minus, and we're asking for your approval to, for us to execute that and submit that to the court, and that matter will be over.
Is there a motion to approve the settlement agreement for 190 Tarpon?
I'll move to approve.
She's our second?
I'll second.
I'm moving second. Any discussion? Any objection? The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir.
Okay, councilman eyes and reports, councilman Alers, we'll start with you.
Okay, it's a few things that, if it's possible to get daily updates out from the department heads, or if we can do it through mail or without, set it to mail out without the government.
Sure. Start again. As I said at the beginning-
I'm sorry.
If, if there's a way that we can get the department heads to put their information out daily as to the progress that they, they achieved that day, it may not be important to everybody on the island, but I think the people that live on the streets that it would affect would certainly be important. Doesn't have to be an extensive thing, just this is, you know, we, we did this street today, we're going to try this street tomorrow type of thing. As much communication as we can get out there, I think, would be very, very helpful and alleviate a lot of what we heard here today. So that's, that's one thing. And then a few other things that I would like to try to see get added to the agenda, which I'm sure some of my fellow counselors are, may or may not bring up, but one is about campers being allowed on, on the property. I would like to address that sooner than later. There's also been some questions about allowing food trucks on properties that could be not necessarily where they were before, but on a property to be able to provide food and water and services and get employees back to work. That's another thing I'd like to see on an agenda, if my fellow counselors are, are okay with that, to discuss sooner than later. I think we need to take another swing at the, the permit pass to get on the island thing. As we heard here today, it's, it's very difficult. Anybody that's been on the island has been very clearly able to see that there's still a lot of lucky loos, there's still a lot of people that are, that are there that shouldn't be there. We have a permit process in place where we've already issued these. I think we need to implement, implement that, if that means we have to work with the county to do it, or however we need to do it. We need to do that, I think, sooner than later. Maybe with the sheriff's help, make their job a little bit easier, they can see a purple or gold pass coming onto the island versus not having one.
So just to be clear about that, because I've had conversations with the local captain, and I think this is a very important point. They, their position has been that they will not screen people, okay? If we want to screen people, that means we would have to, we would have to find town resources or external resources to do that. And so if, if you want, if you want to look at that, that's going to be probably an additional expense to the town, and frankly, in my opinion, you're going to spend a lot of money to try to screen out 10% of the population, because soon as we, soon as we tighten that down, it's my caretaker, it's my contractor, it's my dog walker, it's my whatever, and we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of exceptions, and the net effect of that is you put a lot of energy to try to screen out a very few number of people. If you, because soon as you say, "It's only residents," they're going to say, "Well, what about my insurance adjustment? What about the contractor giving me an estimate? What about this person, that person, the other person?" And it just becomes, at some point, unmanageable when you have a storm of this magnitude. If we had a category one, no problem, we could set it up. Category two, no problem, we could set it up. Category, this type of storm, we could, if the council wants us to stand it up, we'll stand it up, but I'm telling you that it's going to be, it's going to be costly, and we're going to be able to screen out a very few number of people, and we're going to back up traffic even worse, because once we start screening people out and scrutinizing those people, so. But if that's something you want to talk about, we can talk about it at our next meeting and see if the council wants us to do it, and we'll be happy to do it.
Well, I, you know, I'm, I'm respectful, respectfully disagree with you on that, in having conversations with many, many people about ways that this could be done off-island to be able to provide color-coded stickers or whatever it is to, to people that are supposed to be on the island. It's also my understanding that the state is willing to help if we just ask for resources to, to manage, manage this part of it. So I would really like to look into that, to see what help we can get from the state if they're still willing to offer that, to man a site off-site somewhere far from the beach where people can preregister their contractors, where they can, they can get a pass if they don't have a pass, so that it, it's not difficult. The sheriff's office doesn't have to do it. They can see blue, green, purple, red, they can see the colors, and they know that they're supposed to be there. I think all this could be done off-island. I don't want to beat it to death today, but I think we should discuss it and see if there's a will to do that.
Sure.
I, I'll chime in, because I was present after Irma when I and the other town employees attempted to screen some people coming onto the island. People drove right past us if you don't have a badge and a gun.
Well, I'm not saying that the badge and the gun doesn't, isn't still there, but they're there to take direction from us as to who gets on and off the island. They've told us that several times, they've got cost. Well, that's because we're not telling people they have to do it, that's the problem. Where we're just saying, "Open the doors, olé, come on in." And, and it's, it's causing, if you weren't listening, it's causing a major ruckus, and it's causing a major problem. I know from talking to other businesses or to other municipalities and to people that have been through this before, that it can happen, it can work. There are resources out there for the town to use to make it happen, so that alleviates the residents, alleviates the, the comments and the questions we get all the time about the looters and the people coming on the island that shouldn't be there. It'll give a sense of, of hopefully relief to some of our residents, that's one thing that we could provide them. I don't think it should be a cost issue, especially if the state is willing to step in and help us do it, and if there's an off-site location that can manage that, so we aren't having the congestion. I, I just think to just sweep it under the rug and say, "No, it's not going to work," is not the best course of action, and I'd like to see it discussed. If there's not a majority that would like to discuss it, then that's fine, and we'll move on, but that's one I would like to discuss. The other thing, as we've covered several times, I think, is the permitting. As we heard today, we've got the people coming in. It sounds like Mayor has informed us that we've got some help coming. If we can potentially do the same thing that we're doing with the debris removal to, to section off those same sections of permit people in one section at a time versus Daphne having to process everything herself or her staff, I think that could be very helpful, and I'd like to discuss it. And then I think that's, that's, that's the main things that I have, I'd like to see covered.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to, I just wanted to share some information that I hadn't heard mentioned at today's meeting. I heard a multitude of people saying that they did not have internet access. I also did not have internet access. However, I knew that my phone had a hotspot on it, and I used it to access the internet. Maybe some of you are not aware of that, or your phone doesn't have it, maybe you can get your provider to help you get it. But I managed to communicate and use the internet using the hotspot on my phone. It's out there, so I want to encourage people to look into that, because you can access I also want to mention, and a lot of people have indicated that we have not cooperated with the county. I want you to know that I reached out to a county commissioner, and I'm not going to name who it was, because I don't want to be calling out individuals, but I called this county commissioner two weeks ago, told the assistant that I was the vice mayor, asked for help with a particular issue that not only impacted the island, but all of the people of Lee County. I have yet to hear back. And lastly, I'd like to mention that LIPA has been discussed a great deal as far as the 50-50 rule. LIPA has also put out a request that if your property has been damaged, they have an email that you can communicate with them. They are creating a list of folks whose property has been damaged, and they're going to be looking at that. If some relief comes from the state about property taxes, it would be a good idea to get on that list. I registered as soon as I saw it. I received an email back from them verifying that I had contacted them within less than 24 hours. So if you get on that LIPA website, you can find out how to do that. Please let them know if your property has been damaged. And I'm just mentioning things that nobody else has mentioned. I'm done, thanks.
Until the end, Councilman Edelhoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'm extremely pleased with the format of this meeting, and I would suggest our town attorney look at procedural techniques where we could utilize the public comment period, where we could have agency heads available to either answer the question on the spot, or if the town manager says, "Hey, why don't you take a sidebar in the back lobby there and, and talk through that?" I love the immediate question-answer response. I think it's so important to get real-time answers. We've got the subject matter experts here in the room. I'm glad this is being recorded by, in a number of different venues, so we can share it. I think this has been extremely helpful, and I, so I commend everybody involved in that process. I also want to encourage, and it sounds like this is going to move forward, particularly with the additional help for permitting that's coming our way, this concept of a kiosk with humans who could help people who, who come in person. There, there are internet challenges, there are people that are not comfortable with technology. The permitting process, for some, is, seems very easy, but for some, it's extremely complex and difficult. So if a human, if there can be a, a group of people in place, when if somebody comes in with questions and/or needs help, or needs to fill out a form or apply, if you could have, if the town could facilitate, even with this additional help, a place in, in next to time, next to the town hall, where people could come in and see a, a smiling face that could help them walk through this process. I understand the need to, to steer people through the electronic process, to expedite it, I get that, but there are people out there that need someone in person to help them, answer questions, and walk them through the process, and help them through that application process. I think that's very, very important. Lastly, there was one constituent question that I received that was not addressed today. I think I mentioned it briefly to the town manager earlier today, and, and I'll just be very brief, but I think it's, I think it's going to affect a lot of people. He says, "Our concrete block, single-story house will likely be knocked down. However, I would like water to my meter, and I would like electricity to a lockable box on my lot. I do not want water or electricity to my building. In this case, I should not need a structural or electro, electrical evaluation of my home. We need only a site-only permit of sorts. This would allow us to have water and electricity on the lot as we dis, as we disposition our property, as well as give us the hookups when we return with a short-term RV to live in while we rebuild." Just wondered if you could comment on it, Mr. Town Manager, and see what your thoughts, sir?
Well, I think the, the real question with that, that request is more so that when the council takes up, and I believe it was Council Alers mentioned campers, who's first, I'll give him credit, since he mentioned it first. The council needs to have a policy discussion under what conditions you'll allow people to live in campers, and assuming that you, you know, there's a majority who agree that we're going to allow that in some shape or form, then that specific request that you're alluding to, so that it could be available when they bring their camper in, we could work towards that goal. So if it, if I understood the request, it was they wanted to extend up those amenities so they could bring their camper in and live on their slab theoretically-
That's right.
-or on their property. So first precursor to that is to decide which conditions and circumstances you allow campers, which types, where you'll allow them to park, et cetera, and then-
How long?
How long? And then we'll, we'll, as, as part of that approval, then we would provide water, electricity, and wastewater for that camper, should you all agree to that policy.
All excellent points and questions, and I encourage the council to address that as soon as possible. And, and Mr. Town Attorney, could you, from a parliamentary procedure standpoint, could you address my point about modifying our process and such where we can, when people you address my point about modifying our process and such where we can, when people come here to these meetings and they have real-time questions? Our public comment period is a bit awkward because they ask these, they make their comments and we're not allowed to respond. If there's a way for us, and I think the mayor has some discretion in this, and he exercised it, I think, appropriately today, if there's a way that we could either answer the question on the spot and/or direct them to the appropriate staffer to have a sidebar while the meeting is going on, I think it would be extremely helpful and responsive to our citizenry, and I think it would make our meetings much more interesting and more, have more folks likely to attend.
Yes. You always have the authority under your rules of procedure and Robert's Rules of Order to make a motion to suspend the rules, to do away with the procedural rule that is, you know, obviously applies, not in these types of circumstances where you have told the public, where you don't answer questions during public comment period. If you want to suspend that rule and modify it, that is within the discretion of this body.
Thank you. I think we're...
No. Sorry.
And I think there may be another thing, we talked about charrettes, that the idea is maybe more...
Councilman Beach.
Okay. Sorry, you done?
Are you done? Councilman Beach.
He passed me the microphone that we're sharing here.
Okay, good.
So, the other thing is like a charrette would be in, you know, a place where you have a room like this, where you could have all the different departments out, people could ask questions directly, as opposed to doing it inside a, the town council frame, which may solve that problem. Okay, first off, you know, Dan, the food truck and the RV thing has been passed around. I think there's a really good idea, something to see, you know, as soon as possible, get some kind of structure around that, so people can move towards creating it. Particularly, if they, people have a restaurant on the island, they get a license for a food truck. I'd really like to come up with some kind of solution similar to that for retail, but I really haven't put my finger on anything. Something like a container, you know, nest or something where people could, the retail shops could also, you know, get something going. It was a little disturbing talking or reading an interview from the mayor of Mexico Beach that it's been over three years and they haven't opened up a restaurant since. So, you know, I think the commercial, the residential comes back fast, commercial comes back a lot slower, and I think any ideas that we can come up with to help them get some kind of semblance of business going, I think it'd be really beneficial. The other, I just want to reiterate Builders Open House with the Lee County Building Industry Association, November 3rd, 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. at the Cypress Hake High School. I'll put that in FNV Rising and hopefully it'll be shared around, so people can see that. It's been around a lot, too. The, I haven't heard of any water testing that's been going on, but my understanding is just not safe to be in contact with bodies of water. There's been a huge amount of pollution that's gone into the water. I know when you're working without air conditioning, it's mighty tempting, but I just encourage everyone to stay away from any standing water. The other thing is really important, if you haven't already, to apply for FEMA assistance. Because if you don't apply, then they have a variety of different things. They have housing allowances, they have lots of things, but if you don't apply, you won't get anything for it. Okay, now, something kind of in the longer term, we were, when we were talking about the comp plan and we were, some zoning issues, one thing we're having discussion about is about modifications to the CB zoning district, and this could extend to any commercial district now. I think it behooves us to expedite that process because most of these districts have been wiped out. And if people are going to start redeveloping it, and we can give them additional options through redoing what's allowed in the CB zoning, which typically the mixed use, I think it behooves the people to know as soon as possible what they can expect and what opportunities are there. Similarly, with the corner lot zoning, one example that I used of a neighbor who had a 45-foot lot, corner lot, he's allowed a 15-foot white house the way it is now, that has come true. So, now his house is gone, and without either changing that ordinance or variance, he can't build on that lot.
Anything else, sir?
I think that's it.
Okay, well, as luck would have it, most of my items have been covered. But I will add just a couple of things here. You know, there was a lot of discussion about the communication and what have you. It was, it was very intense here the first week or so, first week and a half, actually. We were actually down on our communication ability down here for several days. And I'm not using this as an excuse, but I'm just giving you a little background on how bad it was down here. So, and then afterwards, we progressed and everything else and, and I will, I will take, I will take some of that blame that was leveled today at the, at the lack of communication. I will take some of that. It's not the way I would have liked it myself, but it is, in fact, what happened in certain cases, and I accept that, and I take that blame, me. And so, but on the other hand, I want to explain to everyone that there are plans. I mean, that was said many times today, that there's no plan. There are plans. I want to give you an idea of the, of the structure of this thing, the way it's set up. And of course, I've explained this before already and other people have heard it, but initially, when the search and rescue was going on by the USTAR teams, that's the United States, the urban search and rescue teams, these are, these are basically highly skilled, trained firemen that come out and look for survivors. And so, that was going on for that first, however many days that was, Roger, I have a hard time keeping track of all those days.
Ten.
Ten days. And so, first, they're looking for survivors, then they're looking for bodies. And so, that whole process, they're in charge. They, it was their island, it was their island, and theirs and the, and our fire department, fire district, it was their island. Then it came the day when they turned it back to us and we were able to start managing it ourselves. But it's not just ourselves, there's what they call a unified command, and that's made up of the fire chief, myself, members of the Lee County Sheriff's Office, and others. And then, we have these big meetings every morning, it's the Incident Command. When the, when the event first happened, the initial team that responded down here was from Louisiana. And these are all guys that have been through Katrina, some of them go back to storms way before that as well, and all the subsequent storms after that. These are highly skilled disaster management people. They've been through all of these, these things before. So, they're, they're running the show for us, that's what happens. They're running the show, they're coordinating everything, and we in tandem with them. But really, they're the, they're the professionals. We don't pretend to be experts in disaster management, because we're not. So, they, when Louisiana rotated out, great bunch of people, the next team came in, and I'm happy to tell you all that it's New York's bravest, the Fire Department of New York. They're running the show for us now. And these guys are top-notch, you know? So, I'm very proud to have them here, I'm proud to be working with them every day, just as we are on the local side with the sheriff's office and all of our other partners here. So, so around this big table every morning, there's town representatives, there's the New York, the guys from New York, there's the FEMA team, there's, you know, there's the chief's team, I mean, there's a lot of people, and there's goals and objectives that are set every day, every day. So, the goals and objectives from the day before are reviewed, the goals and objectives for tomorrow are set, seven days a week. So, there's constant planning going on to manage this disaster, constant. So, it's not just, it's not Roger and I or the council members sitting in the back of a trailer going, geez, what should we do tomorrow? That's, that's not the way it works. It's a, it's a massive cooperative process, and I am frankly amazed, amazed at the work that gets done with this, with these teams. And I'm extremely proud of them, and I'm extremely grateful that they're all here helping us in our time of need. Believe me, it is our time of need, I don't have to tell you that. So, I just wanted to give you a little bit of background about that and reassure everybody that things are getting done. It may not, it may not be as quickly as people wish at times, and that's human nature, right? We want everything done and we want it done now. And, but we all have to have, and it's, it's easy for me to say this, and it's not so easy for me to say, we all have to be patient and kind to each other and work our way through this together, which we're going to do. We are going to do this. I am extremely optimistic about the future of Fort Myers Beach. We have to get through this, this rough time right now, but we're plowing through it, we will get through it, and the redevelopment of Fort Myers Beach will start, and I am extremely optimistic about that. And I plan to be here for all of that. So, so that's, that's my little... That's my little piece for today. Yeah, I wouldn't have to. But anyhow, thank you for listening to us, thank you for your cooperation today, your kindness, and I don't mind taking the heat. I mean, when people vent, I'm going to sit here and listen to it because I understand the frustrations. We're going through these ourselves, and, you know, we're trying to handle our own personal stuff and also the town stuff at the same time, it's not easy. But, but I will take the heat, I will sit here and take it, and I'm not going to sit here and argue with anybody. I want to hear about it, I want to hear, hear what they have to, what everybody has to say. And by God, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to answer these questions and get on this. So, again, I thank you all for everything, and we'll continue these meetings, and Roger, you want to tie it up?
Yeah, I just want to add one last thing to the council discussion list, if you will, and that is, we have to make a decision what we want to do with respect to town hall. Do we want to basically rebuild the existing building at town hall where the old town hall was? Do we want to take the community center building and build it on the town hall property? Do we want to take the community center building and put it on the front of the fire department property and sort of create a municipal center with the fire control district? Do we, do we want to design a new town hall from scratch? Do you want time to think about it, which would require us to rent trailers for some interim period while we think through that process? So, is there something for you, something for you all to think about, because obviously, if we spent, we spend insurance proceeds on renting a town hall, that's less money we would have to build a town hall. So, if you are ready to move forward with some point at that decision, we can minimize, you know, how much money we would have to put out for rents, if there, you know, as we, as we talk about the available options, and if there's a consensus for us to do something, clearly, that's something we could talk about at your next meeting and see if there's, you know, a direction you all want to go.
Why don't, what, okay, why don't we do that? Put it on the agenda for Tuesday, give everybody the weekend to think about it, kick it around and so forth.
And if you have questions or want to discuss it with me, you know, then feel free. My only question, just for the public and quite frankly, for my benefit, is the current town hall, it obviously was heavily destroyed, does it have to be demolished then? Is that what you're seeing, Roger?
My belief that, that like many people's individual homes, I think our best course of action for the town for the long run would be to replace it. Now, the question is what to replace it with.
Okay, thank you.
If you could, if you're going to put that on the next agenda, could you lay out the scenarios that you had or the options that you just mentioned, so that the public has a chance to take a look at it and weigh in on it, as I think we all want the public to really be involved in where we're going in the future, and I think if it starts with the town hall, that would be great.
We'll list out the options for your consideration.
And did you ever determine whether the Bay Oaks building would fit on the town hall property?
We haven't done a detailed plan, but our sort of back-of-the-envelope sketch is there's a balcony on the front of, of the, of the community building, and if we didn't have that balcony on the front, we think we could shoehorn it in. So, we'd have to take off that front balcony that was on the front of the building, not the one in the rear, but the one in the front, and we think we could shoehorn it in. It may require a little variance on the site backs, but we don't have any neighbors on either side of us, really, you know what I'm saying? We're not, we're not a middle-of-a-block type of lot, you know, we go block to block. So, I don't know that that would be a significant issue unless the council felt that it was, but we'll, you know, if there's interest, we'll try to figure out. And I think, the idea, of course, is we have a permit-ready building that could be built, and I think if you all like the concept, regardless of where it is, I think, you know, rising something out of the hurricane debris as quickly as we could would be a good, good thing for the town.
All right. I want to thank my fellow council members for this meeting today. I think we covered a lot of ground. I want to thank the staff who's working under very adverse conditions during this whole operation, and I want to thank you for your efforts. I want to thank the people that came today, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion, any objection? We are adjourned at 5:44.